Moderator, good evening, West Orange, and welcome to Tuesday, November 10, 2020, virtual Township Council meeting. It's Madam Clerk. Attendance?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 31, 2019, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 7, 2019. Councilman Garino?
Present.
Councilwoman Krokovia? Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Casalino?
Present. Okay, great. Thank you very much this evening. So, welcome. We haven't seen you in a couple of weeks. Since then, just a quick note, we did have an election, as everybody knows, last week. West Orange results still have not been certified yet, so we will announce them when they are official. But we thank everyone for coming out to vote, and I'd like to thank all the candidates who have participated. Not easy to put yourself and your family out there to fight for the issues that's important for our township, and we appreciate everyone who took the time away from their families for many, many months to do so. Tonight, I'd like to get started turning things over to Mr. Gross. We're going to have a discussion on our best practices survey. Mr. Gross?
Yes, thank you, Council President. This year's survey, once again, is different than previous year's survey. There were a total of 60 questions. 29 of the questions were questions that you scored points on or didn't score points on, depending on how you answered them. And then 31 questions were more of informational questions, where you are, what you're doing, you know, how do you handle certain circumstances? So, we answered all 60 questions, and of the 29 questions, if you answered all of them with yes, you would get 25 points. Some questions had half points. So, out of the 29, at least, well, four, eight questions had half points. And we scored 20 points out of the 25, which is very good. This is, we've been doing this now, the best practices online inventory, for, I guess, about 10 or 12 years now, and we've always done very well. This is probably the best that we've done. Few questions.
Okay, and Mr. Gross, just real quick, just for, so the public knows, just a little more detail, what kind of questions are asked of the township?
Um, there are questions about how you handle certain circumstances. For instance, for off-duty policemen, they want to know whether you have an ordinance in place that directs how they're paid when they work off-duty. And of course, we always have, and we do. You know, the question is whether you have an official social media account to work with the public. Of course, we do. I'm trying to think of, look at some of the others. One other thing is, it asks you whether all of our collective bargaining agreements have been sent to the state so that they're on file with the state, and you get points for those types of things. You know, really, these questions, some of them repeat every year, pardon me, some of them do not. So, it's, but it's that kind of detail.
Yeah, they're very, it's very, very detailed. Okay. Does any of my colleagues have any questions on this report for Mr. Gross? Councilman Garino?
No, not this time, Council President.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes, thank you. If I understood correctly, there were multiple questions in which we did not get full credit. Could Mr. Gross please go over each of those? I, my copy of the, of the, does not indicate which ones we answered in which way.
Well, it's full credit. It was always full, you get full credit or no credit. Some of them are just worthless. Some of them, so the ones that are half, it wasn't that there was one and we only got a half a point, it's just that the question was only worth a half a point. So, it was all or none. So, we missed two questions. Those two questions, one of them, the question is whether, asked whether we had a specific policy that would prevent hiring relatives of supervisors. And the way the question, when I read the question anyway, it wasn't specific to whether or not that employee was going to be working for that supervisor, is, did you, do we have a policy that precludes from hiring anybody who is a relative? And obviously, we know the answer to that is no, we don't. We have quite a few people that are relatives, they don't work for each other, but they do work. And the other question that was a no was how we procure insurance brokerage services.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gross, what was the specific question about how we procure insurance services?
Well, I'll point you to the question.
It's question 12. Mr. Gross, it's question 12. If your municipality contracts with an insurance broker for health insurance, and said contract exceeds the local public contract's law bid threshold, is your municipality's health insurance broker being procured through a competitive contracting or sealed bid process conducted pursuant to the local public contracts law?
That's, that's the correct question.
Okay, and we answered no?
That's correct.
What is the alternative to following the public contracts law that we follow?
Well, that's, it's misleading. We are following the public contracts law, it's just that this particular methodology is one route, the other route is as a professional services contract.
That's how we follow, we follow it, not with competitive bidding, but with professional services contract.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Gross, then, if we were to have answered the question that we did procure through competitive bidding, then would we have been awarded full credit for that?
For that question, yes. And just to keep in mind, you have to get 16 questions in order to earn all of the state aid that's tied to this, and it's a small amount of money, but nonetheless, important, you have to have 16 or more. So, we had 23 and 1/2, that would have put us to 24 and 1/2.
Okay, and just so that I can better understand the way that they grade it, because it's a, and for the public's information as well, the actual question 012, on the right-hand column, it gives you in brackets, yeah, 0.50, yes, and then no, 0, 0, and then NA, 0.50. Can you explain, because in some of the other ones, I've also seen that the scores split up, or the points split up, if you will, what does the NA represent, when it's in there, when there's a number in that NA? So, it's half for yes and half for NA?
There's no, you're right, either way, it's a half, but it's not split. The question, no matter what you do, that question will never give anybody more than a half a point.
So, even if we were to say, and I guess that's what I'm trying to understand, if we were to put it out for competitive bidding?
Yes, you'd get a half a point.
Just a half a point, so that's the max you can get?
That's the max you can get on that question.
Okay, thank you. And I did have a question, going back to the capital projects, 007, talks about the plan. Has your municipality adopted a capital program as defined by NJAC 5:30-4.2, meaning a moving multi-year plan and schedule for capital projects, including prospective financing sources and one pertinent first-year operating costs and savings? That one, we did get a full point on as a yes. I know when we do have discussions with respect to capital improvement projects, I've often asked, and I know Council President has often asked for a representation of something that is in some sort of a document that we see from year to year, the progress of the projects that the funds are allocated for, where do we have that? If that's what this is in reference to, or is it what it's in reference to?
Well, this, to meet this requirement, is probably not as extensive as what you're, what you're talking about in terms of the level of detail. But in the municipal budget, there is a six-year projection for capital based on categories that breaks out how much that's going to, what it would cost us, what we anticipate it will cost, how it will be financed, so there's a projection in there, and that qualifies for a yes on this question.
And since we're on the subject, I am going to once again implore that we please, for my sake as a councilwoman, I don't know if my council colleagues feel the same, but you know, just to have a running document of all of the projects that we have had, that we've authorized, where we are, and along the way that we can see the progress that's been made, and you know, looking forward to the next budget, we know where we are, I would feel.
Well, we agree, and I totally got off to a good start with our last capital budget presentation, and I'll mark the words on that, and we expect to continue that.
I appreciate that, thank you. Also, just one last question with respect to the administrative fees that are charged for off-duty officers, those administrative fees, do they go back into the operating account, or is that, what are those fees?
Yeah, they're revenue to, their revenue to offset our cost of administering the program. So, it goes back into the general funds as a anticipated revenue.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the questions I had. Thank you, Mr. Gross, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and just so you know, following up to your concern about the capital projects, I had asked Mr. Gross later in pending matters to give us an update on the bathrooms for this fire station, so we'll be talking about that later on. So, thank you, Councilwoman, for always thinking of that. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. John, when you said that we did exceedingly well this year, can you compare some, what happened this year that was different than last? I know we did well last year as well, but what was different?
Different set of questions. Oh. I mean, we've always gotten north of 20, but, you know, but every year, they have a different number of questions that count, so, and so you never know what they're going to do, rightfully so, I mean, it is what it is, and it gives us, you know, it doesn't become rote. We've always done very well, because quite frankly, you know, we've got a good team of experienced managers that work for West Orange, and I would expect no less, to be honest with you, knowing the people that we have here.
So, you anticipate the questions, and you have expectations of what they may ask?
Well, I would, I would hope that they, I would hope that they would see what the good practices are based on the towns that are doing them, and taking questions from that, and therefore, obviously, the towns that are already doing them have a leg up, but a town like West Orange shouldn't be, you know, because we are going to be at the forefront of a lot of things. You know, we've been doing a lot of this stuff long before they were asking questions.
We have been, right. It's been our experience. Okay, thank you.
And I'll just add one more thing. If I were writing the best practices, I think a lot of towns might see a different resulting, because it would be, it would be much more up-to-date. A lot of this stuff is five and six years old, not to be critical of it, but you know, it is not as if they survey municipalities to ask them what they think should be in these questions. That would be a good way to put it together, but I'm happy to just be a high scorer, high scorer.
Right. Thank you.
You're good, Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you.
And just for the public's education, some of the subjects on here are personnel, budget, financial administration, capital projects, transparency, procurement, cyber security, gradables, COVID-19 response, shared services, and environmental. So, it gets pretty in-depth with the questioning, and you know, Mr. Gross, if you want to put this on our website for the public, that would be great.
Yep, that will be there tomorrow.
Great, thank you. And moving right along, we're, asked my colleagues to take out their calendars for 2021. We have a preliminary calendar here of meeting dates, starting January 5, January 26, and so on. We show one meeting in July and one in August, and in September, I assume, Madam Clerk, I'm not sure what input you had working with this, with our, with Ms. Cornavale, is September 14th and the 28th, are they in conflict with any of the Jewish holidays at all? I see you, Councilman, I'll get to you in a sec.
Thank you. I'm not sure Ms. Cornavale is on.
Madam Clerk, could you just make sure that you unmute?
Yeah, Fatima.
I'm talking to myself here, I'm sorry, Council President Casalino, I didn't have any input, so I don't know if he has, if he conflicts with the Jewish holiday, sorry.
Okay, actually, I could Google that real quick. Go ahead, Councilman Krokoviac, why check on that?
I was just going to suggest that perhaps we wait a council meeting to do this, because there's the possibility or the likelihood that there will be two new members of the council, and they may need to provide some input on this issue.
Sure, which is fine, but for now, let's, if anybody see any other conflicts with holidays or anything, you know, just look it over, and we could email Clerk Cornavale on this. Okay, so everybody just take note of it, and we'll have further discussion at the next meeting, okay? With that, next up is update on redevelopment, but before I get to that, Madam Moderator, do we have Ms. De Nova, has she signed on, or?
Let me check for you.
Yeah, she may not be with us tonight.
No, I don't see. We do have someone who did raise her hand in the public, we will have to wait until public comment for that.
Yes.
So, just, I'm going to lower your hand, I'm not trying to be rude, I'm just trying to let you know that we'll wait for public comment for that. I do not see Teresa, Ms. De Nova, if you are in the audience, maybe under a different name, if you can raise your hand. No, I don't think she's on.
Okay, so I just wanted to have a brief discussion real quick, before I move on to redevelopment. I know our COVID numbers have increased over the past week or so. I would like to take a quick moment of silence, we did lose two individuals to the disease, and if we could just take a moment of silence for a minute, so I'm going to just ask everybody to think of those community members who we've lost. Thank you, and just, you know, prayers for the sick and suffering, you know, we're, the numbers are increasing, don't want to spread panic to everyone, but we do emphasize caution to everyone, so please continue to wear your mask, social distance, the governor's office has, is shutting down restaurants at 10 o'clock on inside on, starting Thursday evening, for those of you who don't know that yet. Outside dining is fine, but they'll stop serving at 10 o'clock on, at night inside. So, there are some new restrictions coming up, so let's all try to be careful and cautious. I know West Orange School District postponed their hybrid opening that was scheduled for yesterday, so that will move forward. So, again, does everyone continue to do what you need to do to keep safe as we move forward in the township? And we will be, you know, keeping in touch, if anybody needs anything or has any questions, don't forget the COVID website on the Township Council, so always, please reach out. With that, moving forward, Mr. Sayers, we'll have a brief discussion on redevelopment.
Again, I did not talk to Mr. Diaz, because I thought he was speaking to you, so I didn't, I don't have any answers to the questions, I don't know if you asked him any of the questions.
Okay, so, so we had wanted Mr. Diaz, who is the owner at Edison Lofts, and our redeveloper for Main Street, we had wanted him to come in this evening, he could not, so he reached out to me through Mr. Sayers this afternoon to ask what kind of questions that the council had, and I see your hand, Councilman, I'll get to you in a minute.
Thank you.
And he will be coming, he said, no problem, he'll try to get in next month, but I had asked him a few questions. First of all, the lofts itself are 67% occupied, COVID has not affected the rentals in the building, so he was pleased about that. He had a few tenants that had just recently moved, but they moved because they were getting larger homes, it was just time for them to move on. He's seeing in that building renters, empty nesters come that are selling their larger homes and moving there, some people migrate down to Florida for the winter, so he's seen a lot of that, but he's getting a lot of interest in folks in surrounding communities from us, so that was helpful. I had asked him about our concern with the commercial space. I know Mr. Sayers, he had a conversation with you in regards to medical, he reassured me they're not looking at Target Medical, he's had some interest with like a dental office here and there, he, you know, he doesn't have to go medical, he is very particular of what he wants in his building, he definitely wants a restaurateur. At the moment now with COVID, you know, people aren't coming to open up restaurants, obviously, when they're being shut right now, but he is hopeful, you know, as soon as the virus starts passing, but he wants to, still, he's focusing on commercial that will be complimentary to his tenants and to serve his tenants in the building, that's why he thought maybe a dentist office would help his tenants, but if we are not interested in medical, he's okay with that also, it wasn't something that he had in ink yet, just some ideas of people that come to him. He does get interest in other types of commercial he had shared today, however, he doesn't feel they're always complimentary to his tenants, and he's, and so he, he wants to stick to that model, and he'll talk about that with us when he comes next time, comes to talk to us. As far as Phase 2, he is moving forward with Phase 2, he hasn't moved on it yet, he's still planning on the townhomes. I told him we were hearing rumblings of, you know, that he was looking to change his plan, he is not, he's staying with the townhomes, they're doing market studies, obviously, with New York, the issues that are in New York City with people moving out of New York City, not just because of COVID, but because people have not been happy with New York City, and, you know, a lot of issues there in regards to, you know, the way people, you know, are limited with COVID there. He still sees the need for people looking for apartment spaces, but he, there is an uptick in, obviously, home buying, so he is looking forward to the townhomes and the Phase 2 on Bacot. However, you know, we do need to, you know, and he said he is working with the mayor, and on our end, Mr. Sayers, and I know, you know, you could share with the council, you know, we need to move DPW, so things may not be moving swiftly, but we, because we have to also work on that as well. So, he has no problem coming to talk to us, he will share with some of his market studies that they've been, the market trends since COVID, but he's very hopeful with the townhomes, and even filling the rest of his apartment building, the luxury units, people, it's in demand, the luxury apartment buildings are in demand. So, with that all being said, if anyone has any questions on that, but that's pretty much all he told me for now, and we'll get him in here so we could talk to him.
I, Council President, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you. My concern is, and I appreciate Mr. Diaz's positiveness, and particularly about the townhomes, but my concern is, with the retail space at Edison Lofts, basically, these residents were told that there would be amenities down there, and we know that, that's what they were told when, you know, people came. I mean, yes, you can't have restaurants, you cannot have restaurants right now, but you could have, you know, mini-marts, and that, something that residents can go right downstairs and get food that they need, product that they need, you know, medical, a medical building or dental office doesn't, you know, you know, a retail environment built, and that's my concern, that, you know, you're going to attract residents, but they want to have ease to go downstairs and be able to buy product, to get food. I mean, so like I said, even though, you know, you cannot have a restaurant right now, or whenever it will be, but my concern is, you know, a retail amenity to the residents down there, which is also support, done to support the rest of the retail environment in the downtown corridor, that's what we were hoping for, that was the impetus of the retail of down on the lower level, so, you know, we need to bring it to Mr. Diaz, that isn't a consideration, that is an important part of the development, that's what was used as an impetus for the downtown corridor, so I'd just like to make sure that is part of the discussion that we have with Mr. Diaz when he comes to the council. Thank you, Council President.
No, absolutely, and as I said, he was very vocal with anything he puts in there will complement his residence and what they wanted, so, and I expressed those concerns to him from, from, you know, things that we've all been saying. So, thank you, Councilman, very good points. Councilman Krokoviac, I know you had your hand up, I can't see you, do you still want to ask a question?
Yes, yes, I would. I wanted to perhaps clarify something that you said, you said that Mr. Diaz is the owner of Edison Lofts. I, I recall pretty distinctly that we had multiple meetings in which it was described that Mr. Diaz and his corporate entities
Yes, he has other.
Basically sold, were, sold 99% of their, of the project, of the equity in the project to a separate entity, totally unrelated, as part of trying to move the project forward. I just want to make sure that that's still what is in place, or whether there's been a transaction in which Mr. Diaz and his corporate entities have become at least majority owners of the project.
So, Mr. Sayers could speak to that, I may, I may have misspoke when I, you know, referred to him as, I should have said owner, so Mr. Sayers, no, to our knowledge, nothing has changed, we would have had to approve that.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure that nothing has changed.
Yeah, and he did mention, he did reference his equity partners to me as well, so.
Yes.
Couldn't change without it going, without us seeing that, anyway.
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to check on, thank you.
Yeah, I apologize for that confusion, that was me misspeaking. Any, Councilwoman? Any, Councilwoman McChu Brown, any questions?
More more of a comment and to follow up on Councilwoman Guarino's point in in doing research for for another discussion we'll have at another time. I did come across Prism projects, and and they're quite impressive. They're actually wrapping up one that's called On On Three in Clifton area, Nutley, right on the border.
Yeah.
It's a twenty million dollar project, it's very nice. It's a twenty million dollar project that they wrapped up in April twenty nineteen. I I my question is, where's the lack of appetite to move our projects forward? I I I'm feeling like like the redheaded stepchild over here with our empty facilities. I know we have to move DPW, but but I'm I'm eager to have him answer that question. And and certainly appreciate your conversation with him with respect to the market studies. I'm very interested in hearing
Yeah.
those results. So I thank you for having that conversation, because that is certainly necessary for information for us to have. Thank you, Council President.
Absolutely, you're welcome, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney, any questions?
Thank you, Council President, thank you for the update. Sounds promising. I I know that you did say that Mr. Diaz said Covid did not, he may not be helped be harming the rentals, but I'm sure it certainly has everything to do with the commercial space that's there. And to Councilman Guarino's point, since two thousand six, supermarkets have been in this discussion for that, you know, directly with Gene and all the meetings that we've had. So I'm sure that's part of the plan, because he's always talked about recruiting supermarkets or mini-mart to that space since two thousand six.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yeah, and I would, I would really like to hear more about, I know that the mayor did have us talk about DPW in certain locations, so we do need an update on that as well, because that really is holding, holding up the process.
And and just so you all know, I had asked Mr. Sayers earlier and and had, when I had left earlier a message for the mayor as well, if they could, you know, let us know where we're at with DPW. So that I think that is instrumental in then moving that project along. So so that should be interesting of of, you know, our or or alternatives for moving that site. Okay, Mr. Sayers, well, I know Mr. Trank isn't here. He usually gives us an update on Central Avenue. Is there anything that you know of that?
He might be.
Mr. Trank is on the call. Okay, great.
I haven't spoken to Mr. Albert in the last week or ten days. But again, I do believe that that the Central Avenue property is substantially, if not fully occupied. We are waiting for him to hopefully soon bring in the the proposal with regard to what I'll call the the bidleman slash selecto flash site. And we've been working, we know he's been working with Shirley Bishop, because as part of that, there's an affordable requirement, and there's some some lots on Tompkins that we want to see develop with some affordable. So that's all part of the, we'll call it Central Avenue, issues that we're addressing.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Trank. And with that, we'll move on to our council liaison announcements. Councilman Guarino?
Thank you, Council President, thank you. Just want everybody to know that at our last meeting of the year on December fifteenth, we will have kickoff of our Streets Smart campaign, which is a great program that we've been part of. It's helped us with our traffic safety programs, our Streets Smart, our education programs. And what we're doing is with Easy Ride New Jersey and New Jersey Transportation and the Sustainable New Jersey, we are going to have a kickoff on the fifteenth here in Town Council Chambers. And also then we'll be rolling it out to a street event down on Eagle Rock Avenue, Main Street and Harrison to with signage presentations and development of what we'd like to do in our major intersections throughout the town. So there'll be some more postings on it, on on the webpage, on on the pedestrian safety advisory board, on the township page. So there'll be more information coming about that. So it's really exciting, we're really getting a lot of traffic. And hopefully, too, we made our grant application for the Washington Street Corridor, and hopefully we'll tie all that in. I'm really excited about that. And kudos to the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. And so we're looking forward to getting that rolling. Hopefully, we'll get this grant, it's anywhere from five hundred thousand to a million dollars to do the improvements on the Washington Street Corridor. It'll really be great for our students, who basically ninety nine point nine percent of the kids who go to Washington Street School walk to school. So we need to make it safer for them and for the students at Edison, and also for the residents. Spruce up the area, make the traffic more feasible, sidewalks improvements and cutaways. So we're looking forward to that. Next, Council President and my council colleagues, and if I can share the screen, if I can. Thank you. Let's see if I do this right, Lauren.
No problem, you got it.
Wrong thing. Did I, did I, oh man, here we go. All right, am I sharing it, Lauren?
No, not yet.
And I gotta go back, okay. There we go, is it there?
It's popping up, it says that you are screen sharing, and there we go, the lights.
There we go. Okay, everybody, it's getting close. Hopefully, you know, like they always say in in the movie name, we need a little Christmas. Well, here we go, we, we're going to get a little Christmas. And with our business owners holiday and our light contest, this this application is available on the township website and at the Downtown West Orange Alliance. We just want you to, you know, vote for our our vendors and our store owners. And with the lighting they do really spruce up, we've had some really great ones over the years. Last year was phenomenal. I mean, they're really creative, it it brings a little spirit. It gives us our own little Fifth Avenue, since Fifth Avenue doesn't have that many lights anymore. So come on down to Main Street and West Orange. But let's give ourselves a little Christmas and holiday, not just say Christmas holiday. It's a whole idea of the holidays and 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 to bring a little, you know, normalcy to our community and to our residents. So we hope you'll, you know, pull up the application, you'll you'll fill it out. And if you have any questions, you can always, of course, reach out to our executive director, Megan Brill, at downtown, you know, downtown at westorange.org or nine seven three three two five four one oh nine. Please pull up and and participate, and we're looking forward to your participation. And also, you know, the holiday lights will be going on. But I also want to know, I hope our residents and I hope our township, my council colleagues have seen all the heroes banners up and down Main Street for all our residents who were and who are members of our armed forces. And, you know, particularly the dedication that they gave to our country, into our community. And whether they're still alive or they've passed on, it's a way of West Orange and their families to thank them, to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to live in a free country and to do the things that we like to do and and to protect us. So, you know, I hope you've noticed them, they're really, really great. They did a great job at another project by the Downtown West Orange Alliance. And a big shout out to all the families and and members who participated. And also particularly, there's, you'll see them, you'll see people that may have known, you don't know. And you'll get to understand the the people who make up our community and the armed forces. And Madam President, that's all I have to say at this point in time, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Krokoviek?
Thank you, Council President. Last week, at its meeting, the Open Space and Recreation Committee voted unanimously to recommend to the Town Council that the Town Council authorize and fund two appraisals for the ninety plus acre forest area at Crestmont Country Club. I was a little disappointed, we didn't have that on the agenda tonight. I would like to find out why it wasn't on the agenda, and more importantly, confirm that it will be on next, the agenda for our next meeting. But that is part of a process to try to acquire and preserve the property up there. Just around the time of the Jewish holidays, a proposed developer had to had wanted to have, just as background, wanted to have a community meeting about a residential project they wanted to put in. And subsequent to that, it was postponed. And then the mayor and the county executive and some other people met up at the country club. And as an outcome of their meeting, we're going to be moving forward to see if we can actually acquire that property and preserve it. So I just want to let people know that the Open Space Committee recommended it to the council, and hopefully it will be on the agenda for our next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. And just so you know, it, I have it on pending matters for us to discuss. So Madame Carnaval, she, Claire Carnaval is out of town. So the letter came in, I was out of town this weekend. So it did not get on the agenda for this week. But I also wanted to discuss it with everybody to make sure that the support was there, so we can move forward. When I talked to the mayor yesterday morning, he was very supportive of it being on, you know, that he thought it was a great idea, that the committee voted for this and that we should move forward and, you know, get an appraisal. We need to know what the value of the property is, so we can continue to look into preserving this for open space. Okay?
If I could just follow up on this, just a little bit more.
Well, I just want to talk about this impending matters where it should be. I just wanted to let you know, it just wasn't forgotten, it just wasn't scheduled, that's all. Okay? And we will, we'll have a full discussion on it, and everybody can input on it, impending matters. Okay, and just for the audience sake, pending matters is at the end of the meeting when we discuss some council business. Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilman, are you finished?
Yes, if if you don't want to talk about this subject further, then we'll save it, then I'm finished, thank you.
Great, Councilwoman McChu Brown?
None from you, Council President.
Okay, great, Councilwoman McCartney? Oh, you're muted.
You're muted.
I thought I was, okay, thank you. The Rent-A-Board met via conference call last night. We voted to move forward with the engineering specs for a new generator at the Rent-A-House. And also have been talking to Laura Van Dyke as the winter months approach, having more activities for the seniors at Rent-A-House, right there in the community room, which, you know, we would do in a safe manner, because the community room is one, the only room that's open there for people, and the tables and everything have been socially distanced. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, I didn't see the attendees. I'm sure Joe Fagan is here to talk about the Veterans Day.
He is, he is on the call, yes.
Yes. And also tomorrow, Dr. David Jones, who has been doing the implicit bias training for us, is going to be the guest speaker for the chamber. So eight o'clock this morning, the West Orange Chamber of Commerce had their monthly meeting, talking about the guest speaker for Biz Two Point O, which is Dr. Jones. That's at noon on November eleventh, so it's free. If anyone wants to register, please go to westorangechamber.com, it's all spelled out. And I guess I could share my screen, too, for the Thanksgiving luncheon. You know, this annual Thanksgiving luncheon, of course, is virtual. And this is where the chamber participates with Unico, Rotary and Alliance Club, giving thanks to businesses and our community in general. The guest speaker there is Gino Blafari, secured by Ken Barris. Mr. Blafari is the CEO of Home Services of America, a very inspirational speaker. If you Google him, you can see some of his work, too. That's also a free event. Donations and sponsors, sponsorships are available again at westorangechamber.com. And proceeds are going to support the Holy Trinity Food Pantry this year for all the work that they have been doing during Covid. The West Orange Arts Council, so much is going on. I just learned to tell you to visit w-o-arts.org for the projects and virtual tours and things that they have to offer. And the Planning Board, the Planning Board has two dates next week set up for special meetings, November seventeenth to discuss the Fair Share Housing Plan. And November eighteenth, we'll hear the Executive Drive Redevelopment Study that was prepared by Higher Crew. So that's at seven thirty, visit the township website for information about the two special meetings. And I have to just put in a plug for the Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park. This year's fundraising efforts will go toward the Black, the restoration of the Black Mariah right there on Main Street, the invention of the motion picture. So if anybody would like to join the Friends of Edison, please reach out. And fundraising for Black Mariah, which I'm sure during Covid, so many people have been watching movies. So we could appreciate Black Mariah right here on Main Street. I think that's it.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman. As I said earlier, with the numbers going up and us being more diligent about things, we also, you know, have to look at how we are holding township events. We don't want to go back to the place we were last spring, with not having anything or just doing things virtually. So yesterday I met with the Recreation Department, and I got to give kudos out to Candy Myrick, Edwin Johnson and and Bill Keough, just trying to reinvent ourselves as the holidays move in. So they do have a virtual Gingerbread House Contest. So you could go online to the rec website for that. Each winner will receive a holiday popcorn tin and Visa gift card. So, you know, they're always, we love great competition. Also, there's Santa's mailbox, so you'll be able to drop your letter off to Santa from November twenty eighth to December eighteenth, located outside the Recreation Building at the town pool on sixty and a half Cherry Street. So make sure you drop your letters there. Also, we're getting very, very creative, and because the annual tree lighting, which is always so much fun, that we have the first Saturday of the month, this year is December fifth. That part of it will be virtual, try to do it on Facebook Live. But, you know, we can't let the kids down in in town, so we're going to do a drive-by Santa. So Santa will be outside of Town Hall, there will be a route for you to drive down to with your your little ones or just yourself, if you want to see Santa. And that will, the details will be forthcoming, but we just wanted folks to know that we will be celebrating the holidays here in the township. And we'll see how creative we will be. Also, we always do our menorah lighting, and we have to talk to folks about Kwanzaa as well. So we we are going to make sure we celebrate. It may be different than years past, but we are not going to let Covid get to us. We're gonna move forward and stay safe while we, while we, as we celebrate all the important things in our lives. So with that, that's something to look forward to. I'm going to go back to our clerk this evening, and we can move to our public meeting.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section Five of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township's Clerk's Office October thirty first, two thousand and nineteen, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Krokoviek?
Present.
Councilwoman Matut Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Casalino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance
allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you very much. So we will start off with public comment. Anyone from the public at this point in time is more than welcome to address the council. You have five minutes. You'll raise your hand. The moderator will see you and she'll call you into the call. When you are called upon, please remember to, you know, the counter is there to stick to your five minutes. We will answer everyone after the last person has spoken in public comment. So we answer everybody at the end. So if you have a specific question for us, we write it down and then we, we will answer it at the end. This way we get everybody in and, and we're able to fit everybody in the time slot. So with that, please make sure you state your name and your address when you're called upon.
Okay, thank you. As the president said, you'll use the raise your hand function that's located at the bottom middle of your screen. And if you're one of our call-in attendees, it's star nine and you only have to do it once. You also can raise your hand now. It will put you in a queue. So you do not have to wait for anyone to stop talking in order for you to be seen and recognized. And in saying that, Mr. Fagan, if you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, Madam Council President, to you and your esteemed colleagues. I have a few brief announcements on items that were not previously mentioned. First, I'd like to inform the public that a new phone system has been installed at Town Hall and all municipal offices. All the phone numbers are the same, so the public can dial the same numbers that they have always been using. However, because this new phone system is the latest state of the art technology, there may be a few issues we need to work through as township employees become familiar with it. Everyone has received advanced training on this operation. However, there's no substitute for hands-on experience and repetitive use. So we ask the public's patience at this time, should they inadvertently get caught, cut off, especially when calls are being transferred. Ultimately, this system will serve the public interest more efficiently, more efficiently. So please bear with us if you experience any problems. I also want to point out that beginning tomorrow, water main replacement will begin in the vicinity of Bradley Terrace and Jones Place off of Mount Pleasant Avenue. I would like to remind residents in that area about possible temporary inconvenience during the next two to three weeks. Please be advised that any public interruptions, any possible interruptions in service will be kept to a minimum during this period. Residents traveling are aware of heavy equipment in that area and exercise necessary caution. By the way, both Jones Place and Bradley Terrace are named for West Orange veterans. Which leads me to my next point. I'd like to mention that tomorrow is Veterans Day. The regular annual public ceremony has been canceled this year to COVID restrictions. In this place, we will be holding a virtual ceremony at Veterans Memorial Park, not open to the public, but I will be broadcasting via Facebook Live from the township website beginning at 11:00 AM tomorrow. It will later be posted to the town website for viewing. As I mentioned, this is not a public ceremony. So these are the only options available to the public. Invitations have been sent to a limited number of public officials, including council members, who are welcome to attend, but there was no participation by public officials as in previous years. Just a quick note, Veterans Day began as Armist, Armist Day on November 11th, 1919, the first anniversary of the end of World War I. The time of 11:00 AM is also symbolic because the armistice ending World War I was signed on the 11th day of the 11th month at the 11th hour. It became a national holiday in 1938, but it wasn't until 1954 when the name was changed from Armistice Day to Veterans Day as we know it today. There will also be a virtual Veterans Day concert entitled Sing For Hope Tomorrow. It is a collaborative effort with several other towns featuring patriotic songs intended for seniors, but anyone with an internet connection is welcome to attend. Laura Van Dyke from Senior Services made the arrangements for West Orange to be included. The concert will include a 2020 Grammy winning opera singer, Broadway stars, a famed jazz violinist, among many other participating artists. Of specific interest to West Orange residents will be that many of our hometown hero banners currently seen along Main Street will be featured in a slideshow format during the concert. It will begin via the Zoom app at 2:30. If anyone is interested in viewing it, they need to call Laura Van Dyke at Senior Services at 973-325-4105. They will have to leave a message with their name, phone number, and email, and the Zoom link will be forwarded to them. Now municipal offices are closed tomorrow, but Laura will be monitoring the phone for this specific purpose. This may sound a bit cumbersome, but it is actually very easy. I will repeat that number for Laura. It is 973-325-4105 and it's the same number that she's always had. Finally, I would like to leave you with this note regarding our own West Orange township history. On this day, November 10th, 1897, the South Orange and Maplewood Tracture Company, also known as the Swamp Line, opened a trolley line from West Orange to South Orange. It ran for 33 years and closed in 1927. If anyone would like to learn more about this history or any history, please email me at jfagan@westorange.org and I'd be glad to forward them more information. Once again, my email is jfagan@westorange.org. Also, just very quickly, many West Orange residents today are celebrating a 245th birthday. That's because many of our West Orange residents on this Veterans Eve served in the United States Marines. And today is the November 10th, is the 245th birthday of the United States Marine Corps, Semper Fi Marines. Thank you, Madam Council President. That's all I have for now. I'll be available to answer any subsequent questions should you or colleagues have any, any about these announcements. Have a good evening all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fagan. That was a great report. We look forward to the festivities tomorrow and appreciate you coming on the call for us. Now, Madam Moderator?
Thank you, Sally. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Good evening, Sally Malanga, 57 Ridge Road.
Good evening.
On behalf of our Green West Orange members, I would like to congratulate you, Councilwoman Michelle Casalino, on a good election season. It is our wish, it's our wish that you use this opportunity granted by your office to strengthen the tree ordinance, which is under review right now. I am aware that and appreciate that you have expressed your heartfelt concern about the mistreatment of trees in our town, especially after you had experienced a devastating clear cut of a forest right next to your childhood home, whose barren land is now called The Rock at the top of Mount Pleasant Avenue. I want you to know that a number of us concerned citizens and students attended last week's planning board meeting to request that the tree ordinance be strengthened. But this was to no avail. In addition, I would like to share with you and of course, the other members of the council that we had another seven large old trees taken down at 660 Prospect Ave. By the property owners who neighbors believe are operating a delivery business, which is hidden behind the Shalali Club. Our forest was, forester was sent over there, but he could not find any reason to stop them from cutting the trees. And he wrote a memo which said amongst other things, there really are no legitimate grounds to deny the permit. The existing ordinance does not enable me to require tree replacements, though. I wish I could. Even our forester, who doesn't do near enough to protect trees, thinks the ordinance is disappointing. Not having a clear, reasonable ordinance causes neighbors to be pitted against the town and each other. I'm sure that does not reflect well on us as citizens or you as council members. We count on you to sort these things out and I am asking you once again to do that. In addition, this forester for two days a week has earned $53,000 thus far in 2020 and $67,000 in 2019. There was no invoice for tree counting at West Essex Highlands. It did not include that. His invoices seem to contain little detail and yet they are approved each month. I am also calling upon you, Councilwoman Susan McCartney, as liaison to the planning board and liaison to the Environmental Commission, which by the way, has not operated all year. Under your stewardship, this tree ordinance is becoming weaker and more extreme in favor of tree cutting. By accepting your role as liaison, you make a promise to the residents and to the students of West Orange that you will take action to advocate for the trees. You have not done that. Susan, please make up your mind to foster a reasonable tree ordinance that protects trees because not doing so comes across as a denial of the needs of the young people who require a safe environment for the future. They need answers from you. You are way too quiet about this matter. So I look forward to hearing a positive response about this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss, Mrs. Malanga. Just one quick question, not a discussion, but you said that was six trees?
Seven, to my knowledge, to my knowledge, seven.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Clara Silvestri. If you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Okay, thank you. Clara Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. Good evening, everyone. It's that time of year again, the 25th Annual Jersey Cares Coat Drive will be beginning next week and the Girl Scouts are going to be collecting coats for Jersey Cares again, starting Monday, November 16th through Monday, December 14th. This year, it's a little bit more challenging for us to collect because schools are not in session. But right now, we, we do have two collection sites at St. Joseph's Church on Benvenue Avenue. We'll be having a bin in the cry room on this, on the side entrance. And starting Monday, we'll have a bin at Our Lady of Lourdes in the front vestibule. We expect to have other public sites up next week or so and they will be announced. I, I guess the best place to look for announcements is Facebook. If anybody has any questions, they can call me at 973-736-7285. And people can donate new or gently used coats of any size, children's coats, adults' coats. The, the township has been very supportive. In years past, we've been doing this probably for around a decade now. And people are, have been very generous in donating coats for the needy. So we look forward to continued support from the community. I also just had one question about something that came up in the conference agenda, the best practices survey. If my memory serves me correctly, in years past, there's usually been a question on the survey about, that has to do with pay to play. And it's been one that the town has, has never gotten full points on. I think it was something about our ordinances are not as stringent as the state recommends. And I just wondered if the reason why we didn't miss that question this year is because perhaps we've actually tightened our pay to play guidelines? Or is it because the question wasn't asked this year? So I just ask that for clarification of Mr. Gross. Thank you.
Great. Thank, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Emma S. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
And I live on Prospect Avenue in West Orange.
Oh, I'm sorry, Emma. I can barely hear you.
Let me try getting some earbuds.
Okay. For the council, if you couldn't hear that, she's just going to get some earbuds. She's a, she was just very, very quiet.
Okay.
Is this better?
Are you guys able to hear her?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Emma. Sorry about that.
No problem. So hello, my name is Emma Swetvilius and I live on Prospect Avenue in West Orange. I'm currently a senior.
I'm sorry, what is the name of your street? The name of the house number? I'm sorry?
699 Prospect Avenue.
Prospect, okay, thank you.
I'm currently a senior at West Orange High School and I'm here today because I'm concerned about not only our environment, but what our town is doing to protect it. Last Wednesday, I attended the planning board meeting where the revised tree ordinance was discussed. My peers from the high school and I raised our concerns then, but I know the tree ordinance is also going to be coming before you. So I'd like to mention a few things I'm hoping you'll consider when that time comes. Currently, in the tree ordinance, it's legal to chop down up to three trees a year on an improved lot for administrative convenience without getting a permit. Only a report has to be filed. Although three trees a year may seem like a small number, every tree is valuable. And in the grand scheme of things, considering all the residents in our town, this number can quickly accumulate. For instance, 1,000 residents each removing three trees means a loss of 3,000 trees in just one year. As the impacts from climate change worsen over time, it only becomes more evident that it is our duty to protect our environment. Trees are a huge part of combating global warming as well as benefiting our town as a whole. In fact, trees actually add 15% value to both individual properties and our neighborhoods. When trees are removed, problems arise such as reduction in shade and cooling, a reduction in the screening trees provide to residents' privacy, and an increase in stormwater runoff and erosion to properties. On top of this, according to a study by the University of Washington, the benefits trees bring to communities include improving driving safety by reducing car crash rates and aggressive driving habits because trees have a calming effect, which reduces stress levels. They also act as a buffer to reduce traffic noise up to 10 decibels. And tree-lined streets and sidewalks encourage residents to walk and ride bikes rather than drive personal vehicles. The bottom line is trees are vital, so we should treat them as such. By requiring a permit to be issued for every tree someone wishes to chop down, we would not only add accountability to the tree management, but we would save trees, raise money from permit fees, and would discourage people from randomly chopping trees down without proper planning. Please consider revising the tree ordinance, getting rid of the three-tree rule, and helping to ensure our local environment is safe, healthy, and green for residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma.
Thanks, Emma. And next, we have Raimi S. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name's Raimi Swetvilius and I live on Prospect Avenue. So I'm a sophomore at West Orange High School and I'm concerned with the tree ordinance revisions, especially after I attended the planning board meeting last week. So one of the points in the revision, it's kind of like what the person previous to me said. But it, it's talking about the three-tree rule and the ordinance does not include the word living. It says that up to, or it does include the word living, sorry. And it says up to three living trees may be removed on an improved lot within any 365-day period. So I was wondering, does this mean that any number of dead trees can be removed? And if so, it's important that a tree would be planted in replacement of the dead trees that are removed. Because although dead trees don't seem like they're important, they are because they provide habitats for animals and they also decrease erosion. Their dead roots act as channels, helping water enter the ground more easily. This is extremely important to keep in mind, especially with there being an increase in storms and rewater. If they're being removed, whether they're dead or alive, it is necessary to replace them. In the engineering class I take at the high school, we learned about climate change and about how if we don't do something now, we'll never be able to stop it. Replacing dead trees that are cut down is a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Raimi.
Thank you. And Marissa Edelman, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. Marissa?
Yep.
Oh, I can barely hear you. Can you say something for me again?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, can you guys hear? The council?
Yes, I can hear her.
Okay, great. Good. So your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Marissa Edelman. I live on thirteen Eagle Terrace. I am a senior at West Orange High School and in respect to the tree ordinance, as a teenager in West Orange, I love seeing when we come together to make the town even better and more beautiful than it already is. I find myself constantly bragging about how when it comes to important issues as a town, we never cease to come together in a democratic fashion to respect the desires of everyone. On the issue of increasing preservation of the trees in the town, an issue many of us care deeply about, there should be no difference. In the midst of a climate crisis, everyone's footprint matters and that includes our town of West Orange. Yesterday, I checked the weather to see an unfamiliar bar that had air quality intakes. The bar projected that it was polluted enough for some that it is not safe to go outside. Previously, the scale was only something I had seen articles about what 2050 would look like if we didn't do something. The future is coming and climate problems are no longer something that can be put up for tomorrow. They needed to be solved yesterday. We need to pre- preserve the trees in West Orange. Encur, driveway, and sidewalk repair, we need to make efforts to preserve and protect the trees. Trees are a staple of our community and we should preserve and protect. This isn't solely an environmental issue. This is an issue concerning our town's appeal. And having trees around, uh, our property can raise the value up to fifteen percent.
Thank you, Marissa. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next we have Sven Fider Mura. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello, my name is, uh, can everybody hear me?
Yes, yes.
My name is Sven Fider Mura. My address is Eight Lessing Road and I'm a freshman at West Orange High School. I'd also like to address the tree ordinance, just as I did last week at the planning board meeting. As I believe it needs to be remembered even when it's been pushed from the agenda. There's a lot about this ordinance that needs to be changed and strengthened. And we probably don't all agree on what those changes need to be. But I think we can at least start off by recognizing what the purpose of this ordinance is. To protect and preserve the trees that are so vital to the well-being of our town. But this is not a purpose that is currently being fulfilled, nor will it ever be if the ordinance is changed to only protect trees over 15 feet. Proponents of the change claim that it prevents disputes over whether small plants are actually trees or shrubs. That completely ignores that A, plenty of trees are under 15 feet. And B, plenty of these smaller trees have many of the same benefits to communities that larger ones do. We all want to protect trees for a variety of reasons, including the fact that they up property values, provide shade, anchor soil, and give yard descent of privacy. Often ignored are other such benefits, such as trees' contribution to our mental health and productivity, especially vital during quarantine, and the value in having children grow up around nature and so grow up understanding its importance. A resource more vital to us than any money or technology right now. When humanity, specifically our generation, will either adapt to live with the natural world or pay the price with climate change and the loss of our natural resources. All of these are benefits that smaller trees that don't meet the arbitrary 15-foot requirement can provide. By not protecting these trees, the town will be foregoing its responsibility to protect the collectible being of its citizens by undermining the entire purpose of this ordinance for little more than convenience. This is especially true for young people. As for us, the presence of trees in the neighborhoods we grew up in is incredibly important for instilling within us the values that include the protection of nature and the understanding that our survival is intricately linked with it. This applies to smaller trees too. By limiting the scope of this ordinance based on an arbitrary measurement of height that does not reflect, reflect the true value of our trees, the town government is both hurting the community in the short term and in the long term by making yet another environmental policy decision based on what is easiest for people in the short term and not what is best for the entire community in the long term. For generations, humanity has been making environmental decisions based on what is easiest and not what is best. And each generation has learned that way of thinking from the last. That is what has gotten us into the crises that we are in right now. As years of inaction and bad policy have thrust my generation into handling a climate crisis before we, we've even left school. And an overzealousness by the US government to reopen instead of waiting for COVID and the economic danger to pass has resulted in rising infection rates here and across the nation. We can't keep falling into this pattern. From now on, we must change how we make decisions from the top down and make even the smallest decisions based on what is truly best for our community, not what is most convenient. The trees here are by far my favorite thing about growing up in West Orange. And right now, it is more important than ever to protect everyone that we can for the benefit of our town and our planet. The current standard for divining a tree based on trunk diameter is enough. All this new addition will accomplish is limiting the scope of the ordinance and preventing valuable trees from being protected. Please delete this definition. It's just four words, but all these little things add up. And it is small local ordinances like this one that the fight for the kind of future we get to live in will truly be decided.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much, Sven de Florida.
Thank you. And I apologize for mispronouncing your name before. And do we have anybody else, um, who would like to speak before I get to Mr. Puglisi? You just use the raise your hand button at the bottom of your screen. Uh, Lauren Swetvillas, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, thank you. Uh, Lawrence Swetvillas, uh, Prospect Avenue here in West Orange. And, uh, good evening, everybody. I know you've missed me dearly since last we saw each other, uh, pre-COVID. Uh, just a brief update that our Green West Orange remains very active and as of late, we held a general meeting with both new and current members. Uh, we have several projects we've been focused on, including protecting South Mountain Reservation, advocating for smart township development, uh, ensuring that West Orange res- resolves to protect our township's trees, both on private and public properties, supporting the recent great news about Crestmont Country Club and several other projects. I just wanted to throw out a few names. Uh, St. Joseph's Church, Shalala Club, Woodland Homeowner, Seton Hall Prep, Redwood Elementary School, Curb Repair, Street Upgrades, and now 660 Prospect Avenue. These are all places where we've been losing incredible amount of trees with very, very little consequence. Um, well, consequence to the environment. This letter I wrote to the town council back August 9th of 2017, so over three years ago, it will ring true today. I write you regarding the illegal tree cutting that took place in my neighborhood on Friday, August 4th, 2017, at St. Joseph's Church at 44 Benvenue Avenue. Over one dozen trees have been removed in the last three weeks by TreeTech, a company who told St. Joe's the trees were sick and all needed to be removed. Unfortunately, most of all the trees were indeed healthy. I've enclosed photos I wish to submit for you to see. This is my neighborhood and we have suffered significant tree loss in the past. We lost over 20 acres of forest to Seton Hall Prep's actions, condoned by the town's zoning board and with little or no consequence when they removed trees without permission, such as the Japanese yew trees that were accidentally removed when the backhoe backed into them. Shalala Club is now removing trees without permits. St. Joe's removal of their trees were also done without a permit. This in spite of trees being healthy, according to one of TreeTech employees, the employees on site. There seems to be one common similarity to all these previous and current incidents. The same township employees are involved. Mr. Linton, our township and forester, Mr. Lepore, our township engineer, Mr. Sayers, our business administrator, Mr. Preesi, some council zoning and planning members, not everybody, but some. I implore you as township council members to take action. We have a tree ordinance, but there is no, or very little now enforcement. So that was written in 2017. I'd like to echo my fellow, our Green West Orange member Sally Malanga with, with her questions to Sue McCartney, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilwoman McCartney, you have served on our town council since 2002. You serve as council liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, council liaison to the West Orange Planning Board, council liaison to the West Orange Arts Council, as well as council liaison to the West Orange Environmental Commission. And since 2009, West Orange Sustainable Jersey Coordinator, you've also worked extensively on the Pollinator Garden, handing out thousands of plant seeds to promote pollinator habitats. It seems like West Orange and its environment is close to you. In fact, your husband is the chair of the West Orange Open Space and Rec Department. So it's a family affair, but I would love to know why you are not a vocal advocate for a stronger tree ordinance. As the senior member of the town council and someone who is very close to the mayor, the forester, and many, many township employees and various appointments, I would love to see your, you use your powers for good. On our greenwestorange.org, under the, the tab that says tree, um, there is a township council video clip from February 5th, 2019. On that clip, Councilman Krokoviac, um, questions, um, Mr. Lepore about the tree ordinance and the removal of trees and how there's a lack of, uh, permitting. Um, it holds true today and there's been little or no action. I thank you for your time, but mostly thank you for your action. And I conclude my statements. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next we have Ada and Mark Levinson. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, thank you very much. Good evening. Um,
Evening.
I was at, I was actually.
I'm sorry, we just need your, your name and address.
You're right, you're right. Twenty-one, twenty-one Ferris Drive, West Orange. Sorry, of course. Um, you were about to go to a new topic and I realized that nobody for some reason had spoken with you about Crestmont Country Club again. And so I did want to reiterate that those of us who live on Ferris Drive and on Edgemont Road and the areas that are going to be affected, should Crestmont Country Club go through with their construction ideas, are vehemently against it. I appreciate what Councilman Krokoviac said, that the Open Space Committee is interested and looking to acquire it, but we'd like to let you know, or we want to make sure that you know that we are still very worried because interested and, um, and, and desire may in fact conflict with the money that needs to be involved. We know that we need to do more effective, um, advocacy also with the, um, Essex County executives and we will be doing that. But we want to let you know that just because you haven't heard from us yet this evening doesn't mean that we're not very worried about what's happening. We appreciate, greatly appreciate the support that the council in general has, seems to be giving us. And, um, the Open Space Committee is a wonderful idea and we, we encourage it. And should you need help from us, the voters, the members of the committee, you only need, the members of the community, you only need to ask us. We will be out in full force if you need us to, uh, be representing the community. We just want to let you know that we're here and, um, we, we're very concerned and we will continue to be concerned until this is resolved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay, and Mr. Puglisi, if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, this is Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFancenzo. Um, so, uh, I guess I'll start with the, uh, the latest program that the county executive has introduced to help, uh, residents and businesses affected by the coronavirus. Um, this one is, uh, being done in cooperation with the New Jersey Redevelopment Authority. They're actually providing the infrastructure for the grants to be, so the applications to be submitted. This is going to, uh, the application, application is going to go live on Monday, November 16th. But before that, on Friday, November 13th at 10:00 AM, there's going to be a webinar. Uh, if people look at the release, uh, there is a link to that, uh, webinar. And if it's not on our website, it'll be up, uh, shortly. Um, and, uh, what's good about this program is that, uh, businesses, uh, that lease or rent, up to 7,500 square feet of space are eligible. Uh, and also the, uh, maximum grant is $30,000, which is a lot, uh, significantly larger than other programs that have been, uh, put out. Um, so we think this is going to be a, a good, uh, way to help small businesses. Um, and then another one that, that, this is, uh, basically hot off the press. Uh, we're still working on, on the collateral information to send out, but I can let you know that, uh, very shortly, we're going to be, the county executive is going to be introducing another program to help, uh, residents who are behind in their mortgages. Um, it's going to be modeled after the, uh, recent rental assistance program that we introduced. Um, and, uh, that, what's good about that is that the, uh, people eligible, there's, there's higher income eligibility standard. So, uh, for, for a single person, uh, the income eligibility is about $111,000. For a two-person family, it's about $125,000, $126,000. Uh, for a family of three, it's about $149,000. Uh, and then it, you know, goes up incrementally after that. Um, so we think that this will be very helpful to a lot of people who, uh, basically were shut out of our other programs because of income eligibility requirements. Uh, moving along, uh, as always, on Thursday, we have our food distribution program. Uh, this Thursday, it's in, uh, Weekway Park in Newark. The entrance is on Meeker Avenue. Uh, then, uh, the next two are, are special uh, food distribution events. They have a Thanksgiving theme. Uh, the first one is on Thursday, November 19th at Cody Arena. Uh, we'll be giving away, uh, turkeys and boxes that have, uh, Thanksgiving meal items in them specifically. And, uh, what's, uh, spectacular about that is that instead of our usual 1,000 boxes, we will have 1,500, uh, boxes and turkeys to give away. Uh, next on Tuesday, November 24th, uh, same Thanksgiving theme. Uh, we'll be back at the Cherry Blossom Welcome Center in Newark. Um, again, it's turkeys and boxes and we'll have, uh, 1,500 again. Um, so as, especially at this time of year, uh, especially with, um, other programs running out and there's still a lot of people who are out of work, uh, we think this will be a great way to put a little brightness in the holiday season at the, at least the start of it. And then just finally, I want to end up, we are continuing with the COVID testing throughout Essex County. We moved, we do, uh, testing four days a week and it's at various locations. Uh, so next week on Tuesday, we are at Hendricksfield Golf Course in Belleville. On Wednesday, November 18th, we're at Essex County College in Newark. On Thursday, November 19th, we're at Seton Hall University in South Orange. And then Friday, November 20th, um, as always, we're in Weekway Park. All of these, uh, you can go to essexcovid.org. Appointments are necessary for the satellite sites that are on the 17th, 18th, and 19th. Uh, Weekway Park, uh, you can walk up. Uh, appointments are recommended, but you can walk up to get, uh, the free testing. And as always, it's, it's free for all Essex County residents. And that's all I have.
That is great, Mr. Puglisi. Really appreciate the report. Uh, gonna.
And President, we actually have someone else who raised her hand during that time.
Oh, okay. No, that, that's great. Thanks.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll finish my comments with him and I usually go last. That's.
Yeah.
Started talking. Um, thank you. Thank you so much. Um, just real quick, Mr. Puglisi, is, is the county doing anything with the lights, uh, for, um, the holidays this year? Or you haven't, have you made any decisions on that?
Oh, so for the holiday light, the spectacular, uh, it has been canceled because of the pandemic. Excuse me. Um, we will have a small display on Northfield Avenue as you drive by the arena and zoo entrance. Uh, but there is no, but there is no, um, spectacular this year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, so you said you have one more?
Well, it's actually two now. So I'm just calling this as the last call. If you would like to speak, just use the raise your hand button at the bottom of the screen. You should push it now. You don't have to wait for anyone to stop talking. This way we have an idea of how many people we have online. Uh, Joyce, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, good evening, council members. Uh, this is Joyce Rudin, West Orange. Um, I'm sorry, Woodland Avenue, obviously.
How you doing?
Hi. On September 11th, the appellate division of the New Jersey Superior Court halted a development plan for the Executive Drive property. The judicial panel found that Executive Drive office development did not meet the criteria necessary to designate it as an area in need of, of, of redevelopment. Eleven days later, the town council authorized $30,000 to hire a new planner to reverse this designation. Tonight, you have two resolutions, um, before you requesting authorization uh, for two firms to assist in this endeavor. One of the firms is billing at $300 per hour. I'd like to understand why the administration is so eager to grant what could amount to $100 million of a tax abatement for wealthy developments, especially at this time when West Orange. for wealthy developments, especially at this time when West Orange residents are hurting. I ask council, council members to vote no on resolutions two-one-one dash twenty and two-one-nine dash twenty. On another matter, I want to continue to object to the proposed changes to the tree ordinance, in particular, to the change which redefines a tree requiring a permit as one that must be over fifteen feet tall. As we know, there are numerous trees around town, apple trees, pear trees, many trees that never grow over fifteen feet tall. This provision was added according to Councilwoman McCartney because the town forester, John Linson, requested this. It was not approved by the township's environmental committee. I urge you to listen to our students who are so eloquent and who are leading the fight to awaken our community's awareness of the need to protect our trees for our own survival. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Rudin. Mrs. Rudin. Anyone else?
Yeah, we have a couple people. David Cubey, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, this is David Cubey. I'm the director of the West Orange Public Library. First of all, I want to say I'm excited about the holiday lights that the Downtown Alliance, I miss Councilman Guarino, and also, I want to say hello to all the council members. Councilman Guarino, that sounds like a fantastic thing. The lights, the library is actually because of the way that, you know, twenty-twenty, we've actually been putting up electrical outlets underneath the library where there's the columns, we're going to be stringing those with holiday lights. So we're going to be trying to add to some light. The library, as you may know, is open seven days a week. The first hour of every day that we're open is for seniors only. And we continue to provide curbside service for all of our residents if they're not comfortable going in. But we've been working very hard to provide a safe, healthy environment during COVID, but also recognizing that fifteen point nine percent of the residents of West Orange have no broadband internet at home. And ten percent have no computers. It's essential that we continue to lean forward and hard into customer service, and that's something that myself and the library board are completely committed to. And we're also going to be, we've been doing some programming outdoors. And you can check our calendar for everything that we've got going on, including we've had some programming underneath the library. So, and I also wanted to announce some very good news that came out yesterday from the state of New Jersey, the two-hundred-and-nineteenth Legislature Assembly, number four-nine-four-two.
Nice.
That, and this was sponsored by District Twenty-Seven's Myla Jacey, and co-sponsored by District Twenty-Seven's Assemblyman McKeon. And this is to release eighty-seven million, four-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety dollars from the New Jersey Library Construction Fund to provide grants for construction, reconstruction, redevelopment, extension, improvement, and furnishing of New Jersey's public libraries. And I just want to announce that as the library director with the Board of the West Orange Public Library, we have worked very hard to put together a competitive package, and we are so excited that the state agrees with us, to the extent that they funded our request at one hundred percent for the amount of three million, ninety-eight thousand dollars to construct a new library for the residents of West Orange in the center of town, and that will be a huge improvement to library service for all of the residents. It will make it more accessible for everybody. It'll be increases in technology. It will increase parking. It'll increase programming space. And many of the other things that will be necessary for us to fulfill our our, our, our mission to serve the library using public in West Orange. Thank you.
Great news. Thank you, Mr. Cubey. Great news.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Liz. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Williams. I live at eighteen Carter Road. I wanted to voice a concern of, it seems to be increased homelessness throughout the township. I was over at Essex Green, and I noticed a car, and it appeared that someone may be living in that car. And this has been for a couple weeks, and yesterday I saw that person being harassed by the police. I would say a few days ago, I saw an individual with a shopping cart that appeared to be homeless a few blocks away from City Hall. And I hear the council talk about luxury housing, but what is going to be done for these people? Because it appears that hidden homelessness is now being brought to the forefront, that these people are no longer hidden, and there are no services or resources for them. I want to know what is the township going to do to address that issue before it gets out of control? It may already be out of control, I don't know. But West Orange isn't affordable, and I've never seen so many homeless people just around the Main Street area. And I've been living here for over fifteen years.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We'll, we'll address that after everybody speaks, because we do have some new programming as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Kristin Reinhardt. If you can follow the prompt on the screen, on your screen, please.
Good evening. This is Kristin Reinhardt, thirty-three, Ferris Drive. I just had a couple follow-up questions to Councilman Krokowiac's comments at the beginning of the meeting. He mentioned that at last week's Open Space Commission meeting, they voted unanimously to fund two appraisals of the, the Crestmont the area. You know, we're trying to preserve behind Crestmont Country Club. For reference, I'm a property line homeowner. And I'm wondering if you could tell us a little bit more about what that process looks like after the appraisals are completed? And if, you know, if we could allow Councilman Krokowiac to, to finish his remarks, we would really appreciate that also. And so that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay, and that seems to be it.
Okay, great. So it was so much, Ms. Reinhardt just, it wasn't, I wasn't letting him finish his remarks in that part of the meeting, we don't get into discussion. So we do that during pending matters, which is in the later part of the meeting, after we do some business for new matters. So we will have a discussion on that, so we could get all my colleagues' views, so that we will have that discussion. It will just be in a different part of the meeting, which will be coming up, but just real quick, you know, the, they could, the committee could vote on that, and then it comes to the council. So that's what the council will discuss in the later part of the meeting, when it's appropriate for the discussion. So thank you for asking. With that being said, I'm trying to think, Mr. Mister, we don't have, is Mr. Trank still on the call? Now, we had a few programs working with our police department.
I'm here.
Okay, hey, thank you, Mr. Trank. So Ms. Williams had asked a question about our homeless folks that that we've seen throughout the town. I know we've been offering services to them through a program with the police department, with their health and mental wellness. Also, we've been directing folks to shelters. Maybe you could just touch base a little bit with that. I know the chief isn't on the call. Maybe you may have some more details from that program.
Again, the council approved in August a, basically, a groundbreaking program that was sponsored between the town and the Mental Health Association of Essex and Morris Counties, which is headquartered at eighty Main Street. And that program ran from September one through March thirty-first of next year. That program provides that with regard to various issues that the Mental Health Association sends trained mental health professionals to assist police personnel in helping to provide services. There is absolutely no harassment that has ever occurred of any homeless person within this township. I'm specifically aware of the Essex Green because I've seen all of the analysis and discussion, and the goal there is to provide services, and that will continue to be the goal of, of the township. So again, we are working closely with the professionals. We actually have, what's so great about this program is often when there is a mental health crisis, professionals go out and they help get people into services. They do the follow-up. And that is obviously the goal, to get people the help they need. So again, we're very proud of the program. We're more than welcome if the council requests to have some of those professionals come in and speak before the council at a later meeting. And again, our, our chief and his entire, all of the police department personnel really have taken these efforts proactively and collaboratively, and have done everything possible to assist in getting people services and keeping them safe and avoiding potential issues that unfortunately have occurred in other locales. The prosecutor of Essex County, Mr. Stevens, has been totally supportive, has endorsed the program, and we're anxious to provide you and the community, most importantly, with more information. One of the things that Essex, that the Mental Health Association, which has been around for decades, is doing is, is also assisting in training, and where appropriate, looking at some of the responses that may occur from the body-worn cameras to basically talk about strategies that may, under certain circumstances, help transition the issues as smoothly as possible. Because so often, when these issues arise, as, as we can all appreciate, people need the communication and services of mental health professionals, and the police department has totally respected that and handled those situations. Today, doesn't mean anyone's perfect, doesn't mean we can't all learn, but we really are going a step above and beyond. And, and again, we'll be more than willing to have those reports and communicate and answer any questions of the public.
And Mr. Trank, too, we're also, there's folks who are in need of substance abuse treatment centers, and we have been placing those individuals as well, correct?
Well, Project Hope, which has been in existence for several years, is obviously, when anyone comes in and needs help, we automatically, with, with regard to those relationships, come in and try to help them be put in services. You're absolutely right, Council President.
Thank you, and we appreciate all our police department's efforts, and anytime a resident, Ms. Williams, if you've seen something, please call the police chief or reach out. Because our officers do have the body cams on, and all these conversations are monitored, so we, we appreciate you reaching out if you think something that you see may not be appropriate. With that being said, I'm going to see if there's anything else for administration. Before we get into any conversations about the tree ordinance, I'm not sure, does administration, Mr. Sayers, do you have any comments about it as far as enforcement, or you're okay?
No, I have no comments right now.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, starting with Councilman Guarino.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, Joe, thanks for, you know, maintaining our visual for, you know, veterans and the memory of them. And I just want to reach out to my fellow residents and everyone in the township of West Orange, younger and old, just to take time tomorrow, a minute of your time, stop and think about the sacrifice that was made for all of us today. Whether it was a soldier from World War Two, a veteran of the Korean War, a veteran of the Vietnam War, a veteran of the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan, just to think of what our men and women, the sacrifices that they made for us so we're able to live in a country as good as the United States. And I just hope you just take a minute of your time to thank them to yourself and think about them in your prayers. And thank you, Joe, for maintaining these visuals that go on, and it's very important. Also, too, about, you know, that, and the Downtown Alliance, we now have a member of the West Orange Police Department, the Community Affairs Bureau, that works with our board members and our merchants to make sure that the downtown is run in a proper way, and that we always are aware of the services and needs of all our residents and visitors to our downtown to protect them, to make sure they have an enjoyable visit with us. And whether they're homeless or not, that we will always treat them with dignity. And that's why we brought a member of the West Orange Police Department from the Community Affairs Bureau, so we thank that, we thank the chief. Mr. Paglisi, thank you. Thank you to the county executive and the Board of Chosen Freeholders, soon to be Board of County Supervisors, for these programs, particularly for small businesses and for homeowners. The thing that people must realize that it's not only an economic hardship for our residents and for our fellow citizens, but it's also a mental health burden that people are really suffering, that they need to worry, they shouldn't need to worry about losing their homes and losing their businesses where their savings and their life savings and earnings are disappearing because of something that is far beyond their fault. It's far beyond anybody's fault, but needs to be addressed, and I thank the county for being very proactive in coming up with grant, grant applications and grant programs, particularly for small businesses, particularly for them, because the small businesses in any community are the rock and foundation of any downtown, of any economic development for our township. But we need to always think about them. As I've said over the years, and I'll say to the end, is that, you know, we always need to, you know, go to our fellow merchants to go to them, to buy things for them, to support them, because they are the rock and the foundation of our community. And I thank the county for being proactive to, to help support them, because once we lose them, it's so hard to come back. But just think, though, that these people have invested their savings in businesses, and we need to do everything that we can, no matter how small, no matter how large. You know, I thank the county for that, and I thank the county executive for everything he's done for us, especially me and all my programs. It's been very beneficial. So thank you, Anthony and Priest. Bring my thanks back to the county executive and the Board of Chosen Freeholders. Dave, congratulations. It's an effort well fought and everything else, and you should be very proud in the library board. And I wish you guys continued success, and it's going to be a fantastic library. That's going to be far and above anybody else's library, and you know, it's been an effort to make sure it gets done, and council, you know, the council has, and Assemblywoman Jacey and Assemblyman McCann have made their efforts in to get it, so I wish the library continued success. Last but not least, and I only saved it last because the best is always saved for the last, but to the students who spoke tonight. The way you came to the council meeting tonight, and the way you went to the planning board is the way I wish that more people, when you came prepared, you didn't come with vile and hatred in your voice and your comment. You came with reasoning and suggestions of how we need as a township, how to counsel at a planning board, and as every resident needs to fight for our environment. I commend you. Your parents should be very proud of you. You show exactly what the true nature of the youth of West Orange are. And I wish more people came to council meetings and planning board meetings with your tenacity, the, the way you spoke and, and, and the research that you did. You came with no malice. You came, you with no finger pointing, with no history of whatever happened in the past. You're looking forward. And I'm extremely proud of you, and I'm extremely proud of what you represent. But I'm going to ask you one thing, and one thing only, don't stop. Don't say you came to a council meeting, don't say you went to the planning board. You need to get out there. You need to get more of your fellow students involved. You need to educate people. You need to do things. You need to get more of your fellow students involved. You need to educate people. You need to do things. Because once you say a good thing, and once you start a good process, if you stop, then everything stops. It's like, it's anything you do. It's like anything with your education and where you want to go to school. But I challenge you to keep it going, to get more students involved, to teach people, to educate, to put things together, to do social media that helps explain what will happen if we don't do the things that we need to do. And that's why I say do for last. And I point you out as being a prime example. You are a true representatives of what West Orange is all about. You are true fighters for the environment. You make a good point. You make a good argument. And I thank you for that. And I thank you for not being vile, nasty or arrogant in your comments and what your suggestions are. But you're positive and you're forthright. And you're saying, look, let's put everything behind that we did before. Now let's move forward and straighten everything up. So I thank you and I commend you for that. And the residents of Ferris and Edgemont Road, I said my last meeting that, you know, as long as I will always, you know, defend the fact of, you know, and not support any development and do whatever I can in my capacities, whatever they may be, to support the thing, to maintain that property as open space is something that we need. And we need to make sure that we do whatever we can, whatever monies that we have to spend, whatever things that we have to do. These are the important things. And I will always be supportive that we need to protect our open space. West Orange is such a great place. West Orange has so many valuable assets. And the thing is, is that we need to maintain them as much as we can and to do whatever we can. So, you know, I hope I've shown that and I've always supported that and supported what we need to maintain our environment. And without Council President, I thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to start by asking anyone from the administration to answer a question that was proposed by one of the public comments speakers who asked whether there was some, something within the best practices document that had to do with limiting or regulating pay to play. Of course, having to do with getting contracts at the same time that you might be making political campaign contributions. And she just had asked, because it wasn't discussed at the, earlier in the meeting, whether the township had tightened its policy or whether the question was not asked. I don't think we've tightened our policy, but it could be because the question wasn't asked, but I don't know. Perhaps Mr. Gross or someone could answer that question.
My my, my understanding of your wife's question was, was whether or not it was a question that we didn't, that was not asked again, or whether it was asked again, but for some reason we did not. Or we did get the points where we didn't in the past. I think I mentioned earlier, they rotate their questions or they change their questions. That question was not asked this year. So I guess that's the long and short of it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for answering the question. Next, I wanted to just try to address all of the comments that were made about the tree ordinance and tangentially the efforts to try to protect all of the trees that are on the Crestmont property. And I just want to acknowledge and join Councilman Garino in acknowledging the passionate and well reasoned advocacy of the town's treatment of our trees and more specifically potential changes to the tree protection ordinance. I was disturbed to hear Ms. Malanga say that, that that the forester had determined at the Prospect Avenue situation that she discussed, that it was basically okay to cut down six or seven trees because he couldn't see any reason why the property owner should not cut it down. And I, I hope I misunderstood that or that I don't understand what the situation was, because it certainly seems to me that just the fact that we have a tree protection ordinance means that the standard shouldn't be that that the forester can't find any reason to deny cutting seven trees. But the standard should be, there needs to be a darn good reason, a valid darn good reason to cut any tree down and certainly anything over the three that are allowed in the current audience in a 365 day period. But from a, from a larger perspective, this, this subject comes up frequently and has been coming up frequently at just about every council meeting in recent months. And we hear council members and administration representatives say, hey, an ordinance can be further modified in the future anytime we want. And yet, the steps to get to that point is, is never taken. And in fact, you know, many of the proposed amendments that have been proposed in recent years as part of this back and forth between the tree advocates, primarily led by our Green West Orange. And I'm not exactly sure who else, either on the council or in the administration, has been on the other side of discussions. But it appears to me that there are many suggestions that the advocates have made that have been rejected and more specifically been rejected by what appears to me to be a minority of the council members. And I say that because I have not been a part of any of these discussions over the last few years. What I understand is over the last few years about modifying the ordinance. And it never came before the Open Space and Recreation Committee, where I'm the council liaison. It also hasn't, the other proposed modifications have not come before the council that I know of. And of course, there's a good reason for that. The State Open Public Meetings Act prevents the majority of the members of any governing body from meeting outside a duly noted, a duly noted, noticed, excuse me, public meeting, which may help explain how we got to this point. And I also just want to say that, that I want to give kudos to Councilwoman McCartney because the proposed amendments, some of the proposed amendments that are in the ordinance that is not on the agenda tonight, but will eventually become for us, before us for additional consideration and voting, makes sense. I mean, one of the, excuse me, one of the elements of the modifications is to require that everybody, every commercial tree cutting company that wants to operate in West Orange needs to register with the town and needs to be part of the process to make sure that no trees get cut down without a permit. It's, it's just wildly happening all the time as Mr. Svet Velas has pointed out. So I do want to acknowledge that there, there is progress from my perspective. And it sounds like from the advocates that some of the changes are good, some of the proposed changes are not. But my key point is that we as a governing body have not had an opportunity to consider all of these other proposed modifications, because the process has been such that it hasn't come before the council. So it seems to me that the advocates should submit their proposed changes, their modifications, and perhaps the rationale behind each of them to the council. And let's put it on the council meeting agenda and hash them out one by one, so that to a certain degree, each council member can provide input and also provide accountability. And we can address this issue that's been frequently raised by residents and maybe we can save more time in the future. And therefore during matters pending and discussion of this, I therefore propose that we discuss this at matters pending and, and schedule such a meeting. And maybe we need a separate workshop, like we've done a few times this year, where it's essentially a public meeting, but for a very specific purpose and not a regular council meeting. And a discussion with the advocates while maintaining a civil and structured meeting so that all of the council members can have a chance to weigh in. And we can address these issues. And certainly if there is a majority of the council members that want some of these changes that the advocates are proposing, well, we'll just vote on it and then we'll add it to a, a, we can have, vote on it there and then put it in an amended ordinance so that we can stop talking about amending the ordinance in the future and address the, what I think are significant requests by a lot of residents to get the tree protection ordinance in a, in a way that better reflects what they believe is, is necessary for the town. And I got to tell you, I also believe that we can do a lot of things to strengthen that ordinance. And that said, we've made a good start. And again, I'm not sure exactly who besides Councilwoman McCartney has been part of the process that's gotten here. But we've got a good start, but I think we need to do a lot more to move forward. And think of all the time we can save in future council meetings if, if the advocates don't have to keep coming, meeting after meeting and advocating for their positions. So I've already spoken way too long. I just want to thank Mr. QB for coming to the council meeting and giving us the good news. Again, the, I think everybody agrees to be wonderful for the town to get an upgraded library. It's just part of a rather complex, complicated situation right now. And Ms. Reinhardt, I appreciate you coming up. You're right. I, I realized after I finished talking, because I was trying to be brief, that I hadn't explained why the two appraisals mattered at all. But I will certainly address that at matters pending. So thank you, Council President. That's, that's all.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilwoman Matu Brown.
Thank you, Council President. I want to start with Mr. Puglisi, because he's always the last spoken. And sometimes I leave him off my comments. Thank you so much for all of the information with respect to the food distribution and as always, the COVID testing. I just want to reiterate to, to everyone of us, how important it is that we continue to maintain the social distancing protocols. I know I made a comment earlier this week on Facebook with respect to my concern to the spread, particularly in seeing the numbers of the young people that are being affected, impacted and even hospitalized today. I received word from a friend whose daughter is not more than 25 years old, who is in the hospital in ICU. These things, you know, I think when we think about students and outdoor activities, you know, there are a lot of students who unfortunately do have diabetes and have high blood pressure and high cholesterol and autoimmune disease issues that unfortunately have them in ICU when they're impacted. So please let's continue to take care of one another as a community, come together and tighten the reins on social distancing. And we should all do our part to make sure that we limit that. So thank you for that information with respect to the testing. Mr. Puglisi. Mr. QB, that is exciting news. $3,980,000 is quite a substantial amount of money. I wasn't aware that that monies were, and maybe I misheard, but has that money been already awarded or are we still in the running? Perhaps administration can respond to that, because I thought I heard Mr. QB say that the request was funded.
Already awarded.
It is already. Okay. Congratulations to the library, Mr. QB, the board for all of the efforts that went into putting together the grants. It was not an easy process for you, as I am aware. And thanking as always, our representatives, Myla J.C. and Assemblywoman McCann, Assemblywoman Myla J.C. and Assemblyman McCann for always advocating for our township. Ms. Williams, I'm not sure if you're still on, but if you are, this is something that unfortunately we don't really address often. I agree with you. We do have a problem that we need to address. I, as early on, when I first was elected, I spoke to our fire captain and a couple of the firefighters just to better understand what our processes were to address our homeless population, because I do see them. And I know that during the winter times, the county has shelter for them. That, you know, clearly is not enough. I am happy to hear that the Morris and Essex Mental Health Associates are addressing that. I'm hopeful that the council can have some updates. And I know that the chief, Chief Abbott has made himself available to a conversation with me as, as has the director of the Mental Health Associations that we've contracted to further discuss these issues. And absolutely looking forward to having perhaps a broader conversation to involve the public so that we all understand what the options are and how we can help mitigate this concern, because it is a public concern. And if there was something that you witnessed, Ms. Williams, at Essex Green with respect to harassment, I do welcome or encourage you to contact the chief of police with your concerns. So thank you very much for raising that for us. I just want to make sure before I, Ms. Silvestri, I had the same question when, with respect to the pay to play ordinances. I am happy to say that that is a discussion that I've had with the council and look forward to continuing that discussion. Council, Council President, I've asked to have the ordinance brought back up so that we can all discuss at some point and how we can enforce those pay to play ordinances. I just want to make sure that I am not leaving anyone else out. Before I get to the everyone's concern, Ms. Malanga, Emma, Raimi, Marissa, Fan Fedura, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. Lauren, yes, we have missed you. Welcome back. And Ms. Rudin, with respect to the tree ordinance, I want to first start off my comment by thanking Council President Casselino for having the questions that she posed during our last town council meeting and asking that we table for further discussion. I do agree that it is something we need to discuss. And while I also understand that we can continue to update and modify the ordinance, why not just do it in, you know, one fell swoop? The advocacy, as Councilman Kukoviac has pointed out, and also Councilman Garino, our Green West Orange, along with all of the other residents that continue to come to the council meetings to ask for a stronger ordinance to help protect our tree canopy. They've been coming for a long time and they have given us a blueprint. And I say us, because I know that our Green West Orange, well over a year ago now, I believe, they submitted a, several recommendations that they came up with. And I believe our forester was a part of those conversations as well. And that was provided to the mayor. I understand that the mayor was not supportive of all of the changes. And it's probably where we are with this ordinance at this time. However, I do agree that we need to address it. So thank you, Council President, for tabling that discussion. And I hope that we can, as I shared with you, Council President, discuss creating a shade tree committee to be able to assist and engage the community, continue to keep them engaged and have them assist our forester in implementation and enforcement. I know that that sounds something that would be out of their purview, but by enforcement, I mean, you know, staying aware of those permits that have been issued and making sure that the residents and neighbors who have had issues, permits issued are aware of those permits. I think, I think we could be helped by that. You know, the council, as you well know, has a lot of reading, a lot of information, a lot of research that we are all overwhelmed by, I'm sure. I'm hopeful that we can at least start with the implementation of a shade tree commission to be able to help us in 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 ensuring that we protect our tree canopy. To our young high school students, I hear you. And, you know, it it's a problem that you have today to deal with because the because of the policies that were made. And unfortunately, here you are being left with a world that you know, before you even leave school, you're having to deal with climate change. But I applaud you. I I thank you. And I'm hopeful that we can, should we, should this council be amicable to creating a commission that, just like the pedestrian safety commission, has a youth representation, that the shade tree commission will also have one. And I'm saying that so I'm hoping and speaking it into existence for that conversation to continue to happen. I I believe I've answered all of the comments. Thank you, Council President. And just one last thing, I do want to, I am concerned by the seven large trees that were cut as per Ms. Malanga. Perhaps we can have from the administration response to that. Thank you, Council President. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. Thank you. Me, I really, I wish I had a chance to speak first to address all of the tree concerns, but I wanted to say congratulations to Dave QB first. I wanted to say thank you to Anthony Puglisi for the information on COVID testing and the continued food distribution from the county. And for the information for the small business grants, I look forward to sharing that information with the Chamber of Commerce and Downtown Alliance. So thank you for that information. To Ms. Williams, thank you also to bring bringing your concern to the council. We are aware of that. The chief has, we've spoken to the chief about this. And I wanted to let you know that I personally know of two recent cases since the Mental Health Association of Morrison Essex has been instituted. How professionally the police have handled the cases that I know of and in a safe and responsible manner. So I'm just glad that that went goes the way it does. And the police will can address those, the issue of homelessness homelessness. Help us all address that issue. Let's see, and Joe Fagan, too. I look forward to the hometown hero banner as I go down Main Street. You know, I tried to see them, but I really, really would like to see the zoom on on each one. And more to come. So I look forward to the memorial ceremony tomorrow. So when I say that I wish that I had could have spoken first on the tree ordinance, I do want to thank the students for their valued comments. I did not get a chance to respond as the planning board chairman fielded all the questions. It was not a public comment session at the planning board. But since that meeting, why I say that I want to speak first is that since the tree ordinance was tabled at our last meeting, we have had the forester prepare the forms, the tree application forms. We've had fact sheets put together forms that we will need as a township to register the contract, the the certified tree care experts. I appreciated Lauren listing my community involvement bio. Because I did, in fact, reinstate the Environmental Commission to address such issues as this. Our Environmental Commission had been defunct for many years. And through those efforts, we were able to bring this ordinance forward to require any tree. So one of the comments, I believe that Emma made even as the planning board about requiring a permit, a permit will be required for every tree that someone wants to take down. And this way, through this new process with the ordinance, we will be able to be much better accountable for tree work that's done in town. So that's really why this was brought forward. And just with government, nature of government, it's a this was presented as a compromise for the homeowners and the protection of trees for the safety of our residents. I just, my notes are scattered here. I do want to say that the Environmental Commission has always had student representation from the high school. So we do appreciate anyone that would like to attend our meetings. Has not met because of COVID and health issues over the for the past few months. Let's see where I can begin. There are issues that have come up. So when I just said that we were going, we tabled the tree ordinance at our next meeting, the forms that I just mentioned have been forwarded to the legal department. So I invite everyone to come to our next meeting because the presentation will be with the forester. And we are looking for this discussion to occur at our next council meeting. If the tree ordinance is reviewed by legal and then brought back to the council. So many comments will be can be and will be taken into consideration then. I would also like to see a tree replacement provision added to this, but in many cases, it's just not possible or feasible to replace trees in every location. We have had discussions about creating a tree fund. Tree work is very expensive. I'm not sure. I'm not ready to impose that on our residents. That can be a discussion that we have with the forester at next presentation, next meeting during the presentation that he is preparing. The trees, part about the dead trees that Raimi presented at the planning board and again this evening could be a good reason for a replacement. The, I'm curious, though, the property at six fifty four Prospect Avenue is on my agenda. I don't know if Lenny can speak to this. There is a resolution for that. I understand that the homeowner passed away and the daughter is taking care of the property now. There are trees that were taken down at that site. I'm not sure if that's the six fifty four, the six sixty that has been mentioned a few times. But there were many dead trees and trees that were overgrown on the house that needed to be removed. So maybe Lenny or the forester at our next meeting will be able to clarify that. Let me think. I think I I do want to say that I'm a little disappointed in Sally trying to pit me against science and the protection of nature and the environment. We've known each other for many years and I would hope that she knows me better than that. That one of the things that did mention they were the rock, the rock is five seventy Mount Pleasant Avenue that the Open Space Commission acquired six years ago, in two thousand thirteen or fourteen. And on that site, the Open Space Commission, working directly with the Environmental Commission, we were able to secure grants to create, to have a landscape architect, create eight various gardens that have been underway for the past four years. And through grants with the forester and Ann Jack, the Association for New Jersey of the Environmental Commissions, we have planted over six hundred trees on that site in the past three years. So I would hope that yet that gives us some credit for for tree replacement. There are still plenty more to plant, and that's only from what I know through the grants that we were able to secure. That doesn't I don't know about the trees that are all over town between the shade tree and Let me think. I did want to mention that about the six hundred trees that have already been planted and Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Krikovia. Thank you, Councilman, for also. I appreciate the comment that was made about bringing this ordinance forward about the tree care experts. I think it is very important for our township. And you had mentioned about the rock with the six hundred trees. It has become a labor of love for my husband, Joe, the Chair of the Open Space Commission. He is actually going to a beekeeping class. He has been training on beekeeping for the past few months. So I know that he has a class set up there. So I think there is a lot of work that can be done, will be done. Hopefully, the presentation from our forester, once it has been reviewed by the legal department, will be on our next agenda. And all of these questions and comments can be addressed there. So I do thank you and I do look forward also talking about the Open Space Commission about the conversation on pending matters for Crestmont Country Club. Because that is definitely something that we would like to preserve the ninety four acres that that are there. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Let me just say thank you to Claire. Claire had talked about a co-trive. I have been doing that for many years as well. Hundreds of coats were donated to the Apostle House in Newark and also with the police department with the bless you. It's true, with the domestic violence shelter with the county and the police department. So congratulations on that. I would like to participate and help you with any Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman. And yeah, that thank, thank you, Claire, for and the Girl Scouts for working hard for the community, for that co-drive. So important, especially this year with so many people in need. I'm going to start off with Mr. Puglisi. You know, we had an email exchange earlier today and and thank you for the information about our small business owners. Already, Councilwoman, I know you're getting word out to Chamber. Ms. Brill will get word out to our downtown business owners and and next week, we're gonna, you know, look to set up another meeting with all some new COVID restrictions coming in. We want to get these small business owners on the on another Zoom call to try to see what assistance that we we can offer them. So thank you, Mr. Puglisi. I may reach out to you for a representative or if you could be available for that call. Moving on to, yes, we're going to go to Crestmont at the end of the meeting. And just real quick, in case folks who can't stay on the call. So basically, you know, the and I really appreciate the work of Councilman Krikoviac's committee to and 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 Mr. Joe McCartney for being the the chair there for getting those appraisals approved. Mr. Gross and we'll talk about, you know, does it come out the open space money? Does the council approve of a resolution? But yeah, I I appreciate a few of you coming on tonight to be vocal about saving that property. And, you know, it sends an important message to the property owner and the developer that, you know, we we want to keep this open space and not developed. So just keep just keep coming back and sending that message because it it's important. Walked that walked that neighborhood a couple of weeks ago. Knocking on a few doors and talking to many of you. And it's a beautiful part of our township and we need to do need to do all that we can to to keep it that way. Let's see, who could I go next? So our students. Thank you so much for coming down to speak. You're very elegant and not surprised being students of West Orange High School. So I am you know, very impressed on on how passionate you are and and concerned because it's it's your future. This is your township. This is your future. But we're doing all we can. Sometimes the process takes longer than we like. But we have to get it right and we have to get it correct. And we do have an ordinance in place, but it's also about enforcement and how we roll out that enforcement. And that seems to, we do have something in place now for protection. And so it does get concerning when we hear another six trees here and when we already have something in place. So those are some other conversations that we need to have with with administration. And I'm glad Mr. Linson is coming in next week. So maybe he could, Mr. Lapore, to shine some light on the circumstances because they are disappointing. As far as a shade commission, you know, that that sounds good, but we also need to know how we could have personnel and or or staff monitor that. So a lot of great ideas, a lot of great advocacy, but we also have to be able to handle it internally. And that's why I asked to table the ordinance last week because we did not have a written plan at that time. It sounds like we are getting there. And very important because you could, you know, put all the ordinances you want on the books and all the amendments. But if we can't implement them, it it they they are useless. So I look forward. I I would like to mention later in pending matters because it was important, I think all of us agree on registering the tree companies. And we could talk about that that later this evening. And Ms. Mrs. Rudin, thank, thank you for, you know, your advocacy as well. But in regards to executive drive, I I've been through this numerous times the past couple of months, talking to residents knocking on doors. It's this hundred million dollar figure. Is 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 not a real figure. This is an assumption on the executive drive project. I'm not going to talk to the resolutions tonight because those are new transactions. But I am going to just briefly go over the importance of why I felt it was important to to approve that last project. You know, first of all, we had tax appeals that we could still go through and lose millions of dollars in awards to that property owner. So that was one of the reasons why I approved the other transaction. You know, we were taking, we were going to take title to ten Rooney Circle, building that was worth over seven million dollars and had a tenant that pays six hundred thousand dollars a year in rental income that would go directly to the township. You know, four hundred and fifty luxury apartments would have been built, but out of those luxury apartments, sixty five affordable housing units would have been built. And we also would have received a dog park as an amenity for the community and one point five million dollars to remodel the building. We also, you know, would have had the current library turn into a affordable senior housing for with sixty five units. We, you know, mentioned affordable housing earlier this evening. And and there you go, over a hundred and a hundred forty units in the township. A hundred thirty units. And that building would have contained seventy five hundred foot of community space with a library annex. And that developer would have gave a million dollars toward event renovation. So you're looking at two point five million towards a renovation. And and now Mr. QB's great news of of over three million dollars. So talking a full renovated building for the community. You know, all great stuff that actually, you know, is not going to happen currently. So but those were the reasons why I looked forward to to that project and we'll have to look down the the road of, you know, these are separate, another separate project now. So we'll see. But with that all being said, I do appreciate everybody coming out and voicing all their concerns and you know, look forward to more discussions on moving our township forward in these tough times. So with that, I'm going to ask Madam Clerk to close public comment. And if we can move forward to our consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting October twentieth of two thousand and twenty. First, I'm sorry, I
Consent.
Okay. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and beats, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Council President, I had, I did.
Go, yes, Councilwoman Matu Brown.
Thank you. Mr. Gross, just I guess I'll give you the bill number. They're both together. It's zero one two zero one zero zero. I'll give you the last four digits, four oh two, zero six one. And one is for Blau and Blau Crestmont Country Club. It's a litigation versus West Orange for eight thousand versus West Orange for $8,982. And then the one right below that one as well, Petri Engineering for $17,924. Can you speak on what those are for?
I I'll have to look up the details for you. Blau and Blau is the only works that they do for us is based is is tax appeal work. Now, this is
Is that an indication that Crestmont has filed a tax appeal?
I believe this would might, I have to go back. Look, I don't want to say, this looks to me not like defense of an appeal that that the taxpayer made. It appears to me more of a settlement that we from an appeal we filed at his fees for that. But I have to, I have to look at the actual invoice and to get back and get you get you that information.
I can address the Petri bill. And again, this is still Councilwoman in active litigation. So I am more than willing to speak about this offline. But specifically, Mr. Petri is a well-known, well-respected engineering firm. And this deals every, almost every golf club is has a pending tax appeal. So this is a defensive tax appeal and what Mr. Petri's report addresses. As you know, the valuation of a property is based on highest and best value, best use. And so that's the analysis that Mr. Petri's firm was retained to assist in the defense of the Crestmont tax bill.
Oh, thank you. That's it for me, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. Okay. Councilwoman, Mr. Kocoviac has his hand raised. Go ahead, Councilman. You're muted.
I understand that. I'm sorry, I lost the screen there for a second. I just wanted to make sure I understood what Mr. Trank just said, that the Petri bill was related to a Crestmont tax appeal. Did I understand that correctly?
Again, I don't have that bill is in front of me. I thought the way that Councilwoman Matute Brown asked it is that this was related to Crestmont and and an invoice by Blau. Specifically, I know Petri was retained with regard to two golf courses. I believe one was Essex County. I'm not sure of the other. Again, I am more than willing to get every one of you a copy of the Petri report and you can read it yourself. I believe he did analysis on two of the golf courses that are a subject of pending appeals.
Okay, yes, could could you please send that to the council tomorrow? Thank you.
Sure. It'll be, again, attorney-client privilege, so it'll be sent to you as that manner.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so everyone consent on the bills?
Consent.
Okay. Okay, so resolutions. We are, Ms. Aguilar, if you could note, we're going to, administration had wanted to remove item 215-20. And please make a note for Ms. Carnaval that that needs to be placed on our next council meetings agenda because that should have been on when we do the second reading.
Okay.
Correct, Commissioner.
Correct, Mr. Gross, right? That was our note from earlier today?
That's correct. The administration's asked to remove it from this agenda and we'll place it back on the next.
Okay, so for everyone, that was item 215-20. We'll table, I'm sorry, not table. Let's see, just want to go through these questions. So 216 20 will pull. Is Mr. Lapore here?
Yes, he's here.
Okay, hi, Mr. Lapore.
Good evening.
How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Good. If you could, we have a few resolutions real quick. If you could go over for us, first one being to 1820. The work completion for the lake, Lake Vincent in Degnan Park. It's funny, I called, I always called the Vincent Pond as a kid growing up. I guess the correct term is Lake Vincent.
You can use either one. I think everybody recognizes Lake Vincent or Vincent's Pond. This is to to close out an open case file with the NJDEP. There was a report of contamination going back into the 1990s, reported to the state. We needed to investigate, close that project out. There's, there's nothing wrong. There's nothing found here, but there is a procedure to do that. And this is the final step in that procedure.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Lapore on this resolution?
Hold on this one, but I do.
Okay, Councilman Kocoviac.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Lapore, perhaps you could just explain why this is coming up a second time? And because there appears to have been a mistake made in the original resolution. And I just want to understand better how the mistake was made and whether it requires some change in process going forward. And also, if I could just get a feel for, you know, the the number and the process, how it's changed from the first time to the second time, please.
Sure. Well, what happened was, well, I know what I did back in in August. I sent a a proposal to our legal firm to place a resolution on the agenda. And it's basically what you see tonight. This is what should have been before you back in August. Somehow, and I I don't know exactly what they did, they they took an older proposal and based the resolution on the older proposal. And that was the wrong amount. Matrix New World is proceed, had proceeded with the work, the work that they described in the proposal that's before you tonight. But because the dollar amount that they that's in tonight's proposal was less than what was approved in August, they only worked up to a certain amount. And this is really not so much funding the the amount of $8,390, but we're really just gonna fund the difference between the 8390 and what was approved back in August, which was, I think, $4,950 in $50.
Yes.
So that that's what this is for tonight is for that additional monies.
Okay, so so it sounds like to me that there's a potential process issue here where you, as the Director of Public Works and the Town Engineer, you would send that material over to the law firm. And then the law firm does its thing, but you don't necessarily see what it is that they've done before necessarily before it gets on the on the agenda?
Well, I could, I could certainly see it. And obviously, this one I did, I did not catch. It's probably more interested making sure that it was listed on the agenda, not recognizing that the the wrong proposal was listed in the item.
Again, I, on behalf of the legal department, you know, I apologize. Mr. Lapore is incredibly careful. And to the extent, again, we pulled up an older version, it's certainly our fault and we accept the responsibility. But it's not, you know, Mr. Lapore is always available. And again, obviously, we apologize for the the error.
Yeah, Mr. Trank, I I appreciate your apology. It's not necessary. A lot of this stuff is complex. We're human. We make mistakes. What I wanted to focus on is whether there's a problem with the process. Whereas the the department head who initiates this to the to the legal department then doesn't necessarily see it as it as it comes back. I'm just wondering if that maybe should be an additional step that we do, you know, throughout throughout the process, throughout any process between, you know, contracts between department heads and the law firm, whoever's handling the legal aspects of it.
And again, I think generally that does occur, but obviously, some of this, these items do occur at the last minute. And as you can appreciate, with the ability to pull up old documents that are saved and try to exponentially get them out, errors will occur. But again, we'll redouble our efforts to make sure that the other department heads are copied on everything before they're submitted or acted upon by the council.
I think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Councilman, are you done, Councilman?
Yes, thank you. I'm done.
Councilwoman McCartney, you had a question on this also?
I'm not on this one.
Okay.
I had a question on this one.
Yeah, I just want to stand this one for a minute. Go ahead. Go ahead, Councilwoman Matute Brown.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Lapore. I know that I pulled up the contract that was attached to the August resolution. And in that one, it does include that all the labor necessary to communicate and submit the report to close this out to the Bureau was included in the fees. Was that report a totally different report? I'm I'm sorry, that proposal totally different proposal from what we're seeing here?
Different proposal for what you're seeing here. And I I think we actually did that work.
That the one that was attached in August, that work was done.
Yeah, because that that actually goes back to January of 2019.
2019, okay. I just, I just saw that indicated that all the labor was included. And while this report that is include, this proposal that's included on this resolution does have very many different obviously, items that they performed. I just wanted that clarification. And also, thank you for clarifying that we're just funding the difference between the 8,000 that's here and the 4,000 that was in August.
Right. And and I'll, I'll get that squared away through John Gross and and Purchasing.
Great, thank you. That's it for me, Council President.
I just, I just want to point out that this is an example that, you know, we, the administration in the past and the council has been, has from time to time, criticism, some criticism about what we've handled change orders, not not wanting to receive change orders or or resolutions like this after the work has been completed. And we have been trying to drive that into our vendors to to not move ahead and do work before it's before it's authorized by council. And this is an example where the vendor stuck there, you know, basically got to that point and said, you know what? We're not, we're not authorized to do any more work, so we've stopped. And so this is actually a pretty good outcome for a situation where the, you know, the there was a problem, obviously, that with the original resolution. And the vendor worked with with the township and the township worked with the council or the township administration worked with the council to do it the way that we really all want, always want to see it done. So I wish, wanted to take that moment to point that out because I think this is a success story.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
So, Council President, now I do have a question on this resolution.
Go ahead.
Okay. Where in the third paragraph where we're seeking to revise and correct the resolution and replace it with the correct one? I appreciate the comments that John made. The next provision says that we will resolve and close out the open case for an amount not to exceed the 8390. But it nowhere on here does it say it's the difference between the two. Should that be spelled out here?
I'm just gonna say this, the way this is structured, it's amending the the original. So you don't need to point that out because it still says that's the maximum for the whole, because the the work from the previous resolution is included in this school. So the the that is that is accurate as it's written.
So more housekeeping, as you would say.
Well, they would not say that because they're not, they're not doing the work and they're not getting paid. So that is a little bit more than housekeeping for them.
For us.
Council President, can I just follow up very quickly?
Go ahead.
Because I'm the one that's been complaining for 10 years and I and I didn't realize this until Mr. Gross spoke that this was an example of of increased I don't know, responsibility about incurring work and incurring a liability before we got council approval, which controls the spending. So I I want to make sure that I that I say thank you. And I think this is the way to go. And I'm, I'm sorry that it got caught up with the wrong documentation. But I I do want to salute Mr. Gross and and everybody else in the administration that is now following that path. Because I think it's, I think it's the appropriate path to take. And I and I do want to say thank you that it's been going on because I I hadn't noticed it before. So I appreciate him flagging this. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilman. So can I just, just quickly, we we've asked our questions on this resolution. Does anybody want this resolution pulled or you're good? Mr. Lapore, why have you on the phone before I I go through each of my colleagues? Item 2023, the road work that was completed to release these bonds for the project at Central Avenue Valley Road Residential. You're you're all good there. You have all clearance?
All all good. Certificates of occupancy are in place to be issued and most of them, if not all of them, have been issued. So they're entitled to to their bonds back.
Okay, beautiful. Anyone have any questions on this one, Councilwoman, Councilwoman McCartney?
Not on this resolution.
Okay. Okay, everybody's good. Nobody needs this one pulled? Okay, just real quick before I go go back to all of you. Item 226, introduction of the Downtown West Orange Alliance budget. Director Brill will be here at the next meeting. She always makes a presentation at the second reading. So this is just the first reading as, but it's in a resolution form. So this has been the the process. So she'll be at the, I'm not sure if it's the next meeting, Mr. Gross, or next month?
I think it's next month, but I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, whichever one is the proper one, whether it's next month or next meeting, which is in November. She will be here for a full presentation. So you have time to review that budget if you have any questions and you want to give her a call. She said, please reach out to her, but she will give a full presentation to the public on 22620 at the next meeting. With that, I just want to jump to Mr. Trank for a minute. If you could explain 212-20, the services with Hutzla of Essex County?
Um, did I, okay, so that one was not pulled by Ms. Gross?
Oh.
Yeah. I was gonna pull it.
Okay, so I'd be glad to. The mayor, the fire chief, the police chief, and then myself have had a number of discussion with this organization, which is a worldwide organization and has an Essex County branch. It's a purely voluntary organization. And they basically we've looked at the law. They they probably do not need any special authorization. But they reached out to the mayor and the chiefs. And we had a number of Zoom calls and we looked at their protocols and their insurance certificate. And basically, this again will be a voluntary service. They were not, they will not be billing. They understand the protocols that any of our public safety officers will always have the superior, whatever supervisory rights at any site. But they have effectively done this in other communities around the world. And they are operating in Essex County and they wanted us to formally present it to the council. And that's what the mayor requested that we do.
Does anyone have questions for Mr. Trank on this?
I do, Council President.
Okay, Councilwoman, go ahead.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Trank. I'm wondering, my first question was with respect to I'm sorry, with respect to overtime pay for our, does that alleviate any overtime pay? I'm guessing, I'm trying to understand better how they're going to do the volunteer work. Because within the document, it states that there is an option for them to call the residents to contact them directly. I'm not understanding the process. I'm not understanding the process. So are they going to serve as a backup to our fire department ambulance? To how, at what point do they get involved?
Again, their phone number will be available to members of the community who so choose. These are not, and again, I think Mr. Sires is, is on the call. He may be, he was involved in some of the meetings. He may be able to comment better than I can. But again, this is not, has nothing to do with overtime, has nothing to do with in any way, shape or form curtailing the services that are available to West Orange residents or anyone who happens to be in West Orange and needs our emergency medical services. But they are available to, to respond generally, I would say, to a lesser degree of the life safety issues. Again, I am, they, they are, they are West Orange residents, certainly the leadership. And I thought they would be available tonight. So there may have just been a miscommunication. And we can certainly ask them to attend a future council meeting and answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. And, and while I, I think our fire department does a wonderful job with everything they do, there was a little glimpse of hope that this would help balance out or minimize any overtime payments to our department. But I appreciate that response. And it's, I think it's great that they are West Orange residents and are investing in their community in this way. But it would be good to have them come on just to give a presentation, you know, to share with the, the larger public. That's it for me, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Trank.
I have them.
Thank you.
Council President?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you. I got a question. Just something is like, will they be using any of our facilities or they have their own facility to be housed out of?
They, they have their own facility. They will not be using any West Orange.
Okay.
Anyone else have a question for Mr. Trank on this ordinance? I mean, on this resolution two twelve? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. My, my questions are similar about the process. Is this, do they get dispatched? Is it more of a transportation service for residents that would call if they need transportation? Because are they really providing emergency medical treatment for residents? I, I would like more information about this. Do they get dispatched when there's an emergency?
They do not get dispatched. The dispatches not occur through West Orange nine-one-one or through our communication desk. In fact, it would be the opposite. If they were to get a call related to anything that would involve advanced life services or whatnot, they would turn it over immediately to nine-one-one. So again, I'm not sure if they would agree that it's purely transportation. But, but I, I think in, in a layperson's type of view, that certainly would fit into the vocabulary I might use. But I don't want to characterize it like that. It could, you know, someone breaks an arm and it's something of that nature. They, they, and they get a call, they would stabilize and bring the person to the appropriate facility. Again, I don't know if that's the only example, but I do think those are the type of examples. Certainly, we don't anticipate it would be like a motor vehicle accident scene. I, I don't believe that, that, that the township in, in anticipates unless they just happen to be driving by or that, and they're just on the scene. But then when our, the EMS and police arrive on the scene, we believe that at that point they would take over this. That's my understanding. And again, I will be more than happy. They've been extremely responsive and they want to do this exactly for the reasons that were articulated. A commitment to life safety, to, to helping the community and being involved in the community. And that's certainly the way the mayor sees this effort. As you all know, because of, it has become increasingly difficult over the years. And one of the reasons we don't have a volunteer squad anymore is because it was impossible to basically obtain those services and it was not consistent. So there is absolutely not going to be any effort or desire or belief that this will in any way, shape or form supplant the township commitment to services from our public safety people. But this is a supplement by volunteers who are committed to the community.
Thank you, Council President. I would ask to table this. I would like to know more about their actual level of service from them providing emergency medical treatment. Just thinking we have quite a big senior population. I, I, I'm not comfortable. I would like to know more about the, what services they would provide.
Yeah, I, I, I have no problem that you want to make a motion to table it for tonight.
And see if they're available to come to our next meeting. Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Council President, I'll, I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
Who was that, Joe?
So that was, that was two twelve dash twenty. So we're gonna, so Councilwoman McCartney made a motion to table and, and Councilman Kukoviac second.
Okay.
To table it for the next meeting. If you could put a note in that we have them come in for a presentation.
Council President, while Mr. Trank is, is, is here, I'm not sure if he'll, he'll be here when they come in. I just had a follow-up question with respect to a statement that he made that they don't need our authorization to operate here as a volunteer.
Yes, that, you, you're, Councilwoman, you're accurate. Both the fire chief conferred with the state. And there is, they, you know, there is no requirement that they obtain our approval. That's why what we are dialogue with them and their willingness has been based on just understanding it in greater detail. So.
So, so, so while we're in the middle of a vote, but if, if we're, so it's on here for our approval though?
Well, again, the way I phrased it was that we welcomed their involvement, not that we were giving them a license or anything of that nature. We aren't, we're not authorized to do that. So it was just welcome them to our community proactively, which they requested, but not
Okay.
we can stop them at our borders or anything of that nature.
Okay, for the sake of our residents, Council President, I would like to, like I said, I made a motion to table it just so that the residents do have our blessing. Yes, they can operate here, but I would like the residents to know that they basically do have our blessing to operate and get a better comfort level on the services that they would be providing.
I see. Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes, yes, thank you. And I just want to say, as, as Mr. Trank referenced, this is a, this is a fantastic, unbelievably great organization that operates all over the world and has operated successfully in Newark for many years. So I, I, I'm, I'm in no way opposed to them bringing their, their gift to the community here. But I do agree that with Councilwoman McCartney and anytime any, any of my colleagues want more information, I'm, I'm fine with, with doing so.
Okay, so with that, let's table it, well, let's take a roll call of, for tabling and continue, Ms. Aguilar.
Okay, Councilman Guerino? Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Casalino?
Yes, and, and then we'll have them come in next time.
I, I would ask as part of that, Council.
On the agenda.
Yeah, maybe during the conference session. I think it's critical that we invite the fire chief to also be part of that.
Absolutely, and, and I'll make sure it's, because I have something else planned for the agenda next time. But just a short presentation to, just to, you know, we, we could address any concerns that we, we have. Thank you, Mr. Trank. Okay.
Council President? Just to interrupt, just to go back to about the, but the introduction to the twenty twenty-one downtown West Orange budget. It has to be, it has to be twenty days between first reading and second reading. So it won't come up until December.
Okay, so the answer is December. Okay, if you can make that note too, please, Ms. Aguilar.
So it'll be back on the agenda in December?
So, yeah, so just, just so item resolution two twelve dash twenty, we need on the next agenda with the presentation in conference agenda. And then item numbered, resolution two twenty-six dash twenty will be in the December meeting.
Okay.
We'll invite Ms. Brillin to speak. And this will be on the agenda.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Okay, so right now I, we have items F and G pulled. Do I have one over most of the resolutions? Do I have any?
Have a question on two twenty twenty.
Do you have a question on two twenty twenty?
Clarification, yes, since Lenny's still on the call.
Okay, okay, can you answer that one? The zoning question for two twenty dash twenty, Mr. Lepore?
It's not actually about the zoning. I have no question about the discharge of mortgage on this property. It's more a question of six fifty-four Prospect, which appears to be a flag lot. And a couple of comments that were made before on the tree ordinance at six sixty.
Okay, so that, Councilwoman, we could, you know, I don't want to.
I'm just trying to clarify the address.
Yeah, so, so six fifty-four Prospect Avenue, Mr. Lepore. Was there an issue with trees or was it a different address?
The only issue that I know with trees was at six sixty.
Six sixty, six six zero, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. So this is just a discharge of mortgage? Okay. Okay, uh, let's see, do, just, do any of my colleagues have any other? Councilman Guerino, any, you want anything else pulled or do you have a question on?
No, thank you. Everybody else, it's all been pulled or taken.
Okay, uh, Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes, thank you. I do have a couple of questions on different, on different resolute, proposed resolutions. But the first one I want to talk about is two sixteen dash twenty. And I, I, I want to make clear that I'm recusing myself from any discussion having to do with my litigation. But two sixteen is a joint resolution that talks about my litigation and a personnel matter. And I just wanted to, to, if I could get some clarification on whether there's any reason why because of the resolution is, is structured the way it is that I should not be part of the discussion about the personnel matter. I don't see a reason, but I just want to get that clarification, please.
Again, this is Rich Trank, unless there's a, something that the clerk is aware of. I believe that that was a carryover from something else. And I am not aware of a personnel matter that we're going to discuss in the executive session. But if, if the clerk, I believe the clerk pulled this up from a agenda that goes back a couple of meetings ago when there was a personnel matter at that time.
Okay, okay, so. So that makes it pretty clear that I'm, I'm recused from, from that essentially.
Yes.
Well, I see you are recusing yourself not only from two sixteen dash twenty, but also two seventeen dash twenty.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, so thank you for that clarification. I just want to make sure I, I got my notes right. Resolution two fifteen dash twenty has been removed?
Yes, it's gonna, yes, it should, should have been on the next agenda, so.
Okay, and just a, a quick question on two twenty-five dash twenty, that's still on the agenda?
Two twenty-five, um, yeah, that's still right now on consent agenda unless you have a question or you want it pulled? That's.
Yeah, I, I just basically have a question because I, I don't know where this number comes from. But I also, I also know that, that it's got to be a bond ordinance. So I'll have more, more opportunity to get information on it. But I may just, I don't want to vote on something like this unless I know exactly where this, this number, this seven point eight seven six million dollars.
Mr. Gross could speak to that.
It's, it's based on an estimate that I prepared based on my knowledge of, of West Orange's finances and professional intuition. It's, it is not a firm number. I frankly, I do not anticipate that at the end of the day, we'll actually be anywhere near that number. However, if, if tomorrow there was a, a, a new virus and shut down everything from now till the end of the year, perhaps that number's a lot closer than. So it's, it's, this is, this is truly housekeeping right now. But it, but it does authorize us to take action if it should be necessary.
Excuse me, Councilman Kukoviac, if you don't mind me, just, I just want to direct Mr. Gross. If you could just explain to the public the need for this.
Yeah, ba- basically, we have a certain amount of anticipated revenues that makes our, our budget balance. And with the onset of COVID, in particular, there's a certain number of, of our revenues that have taken, we know have taken hits. And that's things like the hotel tax, construction fees, the municipal court. Believe it or not, ambulance calls, the collections on them have not kept up with previous paces. So we will probably have to use some of this. But again, it's nowhere near where, where we, where I think we're going to end up. I will tell you that, you know, what we don't know right now, being the 10th of November, the due date for taxes is the seventh of the sixteenth. So for the fourth quarter, so, you know, I don't, I don't have a real good estimate. There's no really, no way to tell where we are in that collection until we get to the sixteenth. So there is some money in here in case we're, we're low on our tax collection as well.
So if, if I could, Council President.
I'm sorry, Councilman.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate the explanation. Did you actually have to file with the state a detailed analysis of where you came up with this number?
I'm going to, yes.
Okay, okay, so as you may already predict, I'm, I'm not comfortable with signing on to borrowing or authorizing the borrowing of this much money at this point, absent a real detailed explanation of why we need it. So if I could, Council President, could I just ask that, that this be, two twenty-five dash twenty be taken off the consent agenda and put on for a vote, please?
Sure, but let me just ask Mr. Gross this question. As far as the process with obtaining the, this, this special fund. Again, I, I mean, you get one shot at this. So if we were to lower this amount and we need it more, do we have that opportunity?
You do not, this is it. You, you, you have one more opportunity to pass it. This is, this will be introduction tonight. This resolution authorizes me to submit it to, to the, the local finance board. If this resolution does not pass, well, then it's all over. We're not doing it no matter what. And if, if you lower, if you lower the amount and we need more, then, you know, the, the council will have to live with that. You know, in, in, you know, in the future. I'm, I will tell you that I don't really believe that we're going to, going, going to need, certainly, we're not going to need all of these funds. But that's based on what I know today. And as we all know, what, what we know today, tomorrow could be a whole new world. And so the prudent thing to do is to prepare for that eventuality. And that's why we're recommending this tonight.
Do you have any more questions, Councilman? Are you?
No, no, I, I do want it to be pulled and, and have a separate vote. And I also wanted, I also wanted to make sure that we also pull two eleven dash twenty and also two nineteen dash.
Two eleven. Two eleven and two nineteen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and Mr. Gross, just staying on this one for right now. My, my question is, so if we, if we, if we leave this, we vote on it, and we get to the end of the year, and we don't need seven point eight, do, we don't need to take seven point eight, correct? So, we only need three?
No.
Three million.
Correct, but, but you're, but I will tell you, you're leaving that with my judgment. I, I'll have to decide when, when, when to borrow and how much. And, but I, but there is the other side of it, is this is going to be reviewed by the Division of Local Government Services. And if we end up borrowing too much, we're going to have to basically immediately pay that back. So, we'll never, ever borrow more than we need. There won't be any surplus of these funds that will be given back, and, you know, the, the cost will be a, a, the cost of a bond anticipation note, which these days are running around a quarter to three eighths of a percent. So, so it, it's really not very much, that, not, this is, if you look at it as an insurance policy, this is not going to cost taxpayers very much, because if they need it, they need it. You know, we're going to need it if we ultimately do, so you'd have to do something anyway. It's either, it's either, you see the bar of this money and pay it back over five years, or next year, get a hundred percent of it from the taxpayer. That doesn't seem prudent in these days and times. So, that's why we're recommending this.
So, so just, basically, if we need less, you could go lower. You'll inform us, you will inform us of that when we get to that point?
I'll be happy to inform you, but, but, but I just want you to understand, this ordinance and this resolution is going to authorize me to use my professional judgment. So, you know, I've been doing this for thirty-five years. I think that we've, if you look at our, our debt service payments over, over, over the last ten years, you can see that they've, they've seriously dropped because of the market, and that we've managed our money very well. Having said that, you, you know, whatever, if you're, if you're, the council's judgment is that you, you'd rather some other number, you know, that, that's really entirely up to you.
Okay. Okay, all right, we'll hold off on this till we, we go back with the pollings of this. Oh, it's pulled, so right now, I have AFGI and O pulled. Councilman McTou Brown, anything else pulled?
No, thank you.
Any other questions you may have on the other items that we discussed?
No, I think we've gone through all of them. Want to say thank you for going through all those.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and Councilwoman McCartney.
Okay, sorry to say, I do have another question. Looking through when the council, when the planning board, looking through my planning board notes, when we examined the, reexamined in the master plan and presented recommendations to update zoning designations on resolution two twenty-one dash twenty, that was one of the approved recommendations, and we have a resolution back in September that was approved. I'm just curious to know why it is back on our agenda now.
Mr. Trank, this is housekeeping?
This was the property on Upper Mellon Avenue.
So, this.
And Mr. Moon worked on this?
Yeah, this is, sale, two twenty-one dash twenty. Right, this is consistent with the master plan, but this was a particular sale.
Right, and September tenth, two thousand nineteen, we had a resolution to do this same transaction.
My recollection is there had to be a subdivision, and it took a period of time to be able to finalize the transaction. Mr. Moon handled this, but that's my general recollection of this transaction.
So, this will be already for the sale, then, once we pass this tonight?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then that transaction will be completed?
Correct.
So, there must have had a, they must have had a change on the paperwork, is what I'm assuming, but is there any way we could find out from Mr. Moon, or?
Well, what it says, what it says, Council, Council President, is that it's authorizing the execution of the, of the closing documents, so.
Oh, okay.
I assume that the, the earlier resolution authorized the sale, and this is authorizing the actual execution of the closing documents.
Yes, the agreement of sale, yes. Thank you, Mr. Kaser, for that.
Okay, you're good, Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
What's left of it, yes.
A second?
Who's second, Susan?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Okay, good, okay, so, we'll go to item A, the resolution for the retention of David Spats to assist the planning board regarding possible redevelopment of Executive Drive. Councilman Kukoviac, you have a question for Mr. Trank on that? Are you?
Well, I, I, I don't think so. I think it's, it, it makes sense to have somebody advise the planning board when the planner for the planning board has recused himself from this consideration because he was the planner who wrote the previous investigative report. And this is all having to do with executive drive redevelopment. But I had asked the, the the background for Mr. Spats, gave a long list of municipalities that he had done work with, but there was no specification that he has done anything having to do specifically with redevelopment, redevelopment investigative reports, and I just, I asked for that last week, last Friday, and didn't get it, so I just wanted to do flag this so that I could vote against it, because I'm, I'm not going to vote in to spend money on somebody I don't know, is, I don't have a good feeling can, can deliver value for the money we're spending.
Okay. Mr. Trank, do you want to weigh in on this?
Yes, he's fully qualified. His credentials indicate that he's been involved in various redevelopment aspects. And again, his, his purpose is exactly as was referenced, to be there for the board, because obviously, higher gruel is going to be presenting the study. So, again, because Mr. Raigle has recused himself, Mr. Spats has the experience based upon the information that's been provided.
Yep.
He's served on New Jersey Future Committee on the State Development and Redevelopment Plan. You know, he's on various many boards here.
And the towns that are listed that he has extensive experience in.
Are all redevelopment, Hoboken.
Yes, they've all had redevelopment.
Hackensack.
So, it's not his first rodeo.
Yeah, Inglewood, yeah, these, these are all towns that have redevelopment, major redevelopment.
Council President, I just want to make sure that I was in, in what my issue was. I asked for specific information about where he had redevelopment experience, because again, I think that's what we need in this situation, and I don't have any of that. I have a long list of municipalities he's been involved in, but nothing that specifies where he's been in redevelopment. That's, that's all.
Okay. Okay, any, anyone else have any questions on, on this item? Okay. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Aquilor.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution two eleven dash twenty first?
No move.
Second?
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman McTou Brown?
Before I, I vote, I just wanted to make a statement, just to be very clear that while, while I voted no for the process to begin so soon after the appellate division, the reality is, as it stands, that it is going before the planning board. The, the report has been done, and I think it prudence to have someone with expertise guide the planning board and be able to answer any questions that they may have, and also any questions that I anticipate the council would have, so my vote is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman McCartney?
My vote is yes, also.
Council President Michelle Casalino?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Okay, so we we need to approve to go into executive session, item two sixteen dash twenty F, have a motion?
We, do you want to, before you go into executive session, just to extend to public, do you want to finish the rest of the items?
Yeah, we have two more. Okay, so, let's go to I then, two nineteen dash twenty.
Two nineteen.
Resolution authorizing retention of Isabel Chow, Exquire, to assist planning board regarding, regarding possible redevelopment of Executive Drive. Councilman Kukoviac, you pulled this one?
Yes, thank you. I, I, I pulled this because it seems to me reasonable that the planning board legal representation can handle this. And if the legal representation for the planning board cannot handle this, then he probably shouldn't be in his position. And alternately, we have, for several years, as long as I've been on the council, we have had an outside law firm that has been, the Redevelopment Council, and has been reimbursed by the redeveloper himself. So, if, if the planning board lawyer cannot handle this issue, then we should, we should have the redevelopment, the town redevelopment council handle it, where we don't have to incur any additional cost.
So, can I, if I can respond, Council President?
Sure.
So, specifically with regard to this, the the chair of the planning board, Mr. Weston, who's obviously served in that board, I'm sure Councilman McCartney can tell us how long, but probably the better part, if not longer than twenty years. Specifically, with regard to this matter, which is going to be before the planning board, what was pointed out by the appellate division was that it is absolutely essential that the record be carefully made, that the resolution be done with the degree of exactitude. So, Mr. Weston specifically asked that there be a special redevelopment attorney designated for advising the planning board. That is not advising the town council. This is the planning board, so the planning board record will be made as, as carefully as is required under the local housing and redevelopment laws. Specifically to the two points that were just made, normal redevelopment council is McManaman Scotland Baumann, which is the firm I am currently a member of. And so, since I will be advising the township council, I did not want to take that and to, in any way, shape, or form, risk the record and not have the planning board have its separate council, which is what Ms. Cho is. She's with Windell Marx. And so, that's why it, while, obviously, I believe that our firm has provided counsel to this township council and has handled various pieces of litigation, both past and present, that it's appropriate to have separate counsel for the planning board. Finally, the comment that was made that this should be paid for the redeveloper, no, I, that, I, I know that the Councilman is absolutely correct. It absolutely knows the fact that there is no redevelopment. There is no redeveloper, there is nothing with regard to this site. We are back to square one, as has been directed by the appellate division, and as you have referred to it. So, it would not be appropriate at this time at all to ask any potential redeveloper or any potential property owner to fund this process, to consider whether or not one hundred Executive Drive, two hundred Executive Drive, and ten Rooney meet the criteria set forth under the local housing redevelopment laws. So, that, that's not possible. As, as you also saw, this is a three thousand dollar expenditure. The Spats one, I think, is about twenty one hundred dollars, and of course, when you look at that and you look at the millions of dollars that are in play, both in all aspects of this, to do this right and appropriately and transparently is exactly what I think this township council has directed, and what certainly the mayor and the administration are intent on doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. Anyone, you're good, Councilman?
Yeah, my point still stays, yes.
Sure. Anyone else have comments or questions for Mr. Trank on this?
Council President, just a comment?
Sure.
Well, I understand Councilman Kukoviac's position. I, I also am looking at this from, from the same position with respect to the, the difference in council and guidance there of expecting, and, and from a layman's perspective, you know, taking off my council hat, if I, if I, if I became aware that a developer paid for the legal fees for an independent council to the planning board, I might question that. So, I, I don't think it's the responsibility of any developer, should there be one, if there is one, to be involved at this stage to pay for any legal fees for an attorney to advise the planning board. You know, I, I, again, I, I think that there should be a separation in, in, in legal council to the council and to the planning board, so I just wanted to point that out. But I did have a question as to, Mr. Trank, how, how did the firm, how was the firm selected?
Again, Ms. Cho, Ms. Cho has never, Ms. Cho formerly was at McManaman, left a year or so ago. She never was involved in this project ever, when she was at our firm. Obviously, I know her to be an experienced and well-known redevelopment attorney who has handled many redevelopment matters around the state. So, again, never involved when she was at McManaman with regard to any of the West Orange projects, certainly not this project. And so, that is certainly how she was recommended.
Mr. Trank, then a follow-up question to that. When did she depart the firm?
I don't know the exact date, pre, I'm going to say pre-COVID, but I, I, I don't know. Everything to me is pre or post-COVID, so I'm, I'm not going to be able to give you an exact date, but certainly, she was never involved in any aspect of Executive Drive or Essex Green, so.
That's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Trank.
If I could just.
Another question?
Yes, you, you may recall that the council majority voted in the current planning board lawyer earlier this year. There were certain comments made about his potential inexperience that I made. I, I've known the lawyer since he was a kid, and, and I think he's a wonderful person. But I just want to point out to you guys that the, the person that the council majority appointed to be the planning board attorney, you are now essentially saying, he can't do the job. We have to hire somebody to come in and, and, and do this.
Again, I have to take exception, and it, it's fine if you want to attack anyone, including me, you have that right to. But Mr. McPherson has represented, and that was certainly not what Mr. Weston said to me when he said, can we have special redevelopment council for this consideration? Mr. McPherson ably represented the planning board before the appellate division. He's involved in the current appeal by Mr. Malanga of the library site. So, there is no aspect of it, and there has never been any statement by Mr. Weston or anybody that I'm aware of. And again, Councilwoman McCartney serves on the planning board, so she can comment directly. But again, this town has had, has not had anywhere near the amount of redevelopment aspects that other towns have had. So, again, I, I just don't think it's appropriate or fair to suggest for a moment that this is an indictment on anything Mr. McPherson has done or not done. It has nothing to do with that. It has to do with, we are. It has to do with, we are in a situation with important properties, important amenities. Uh, the ability to get one in a hundred year improvements to this town. That certainly we all want the record to be clear and we want every member of the public. Uh, and we wanted to get to you for your ultimate decision as council people. So, um, it's not about Mr. McPherson, just like it's not about Mr. Greigle. It's about what's right and, and achieving whatever is right under the law and in the best interest of the community. So I, I, I do have to suggest that there is not a scintilla of evidence. That, uh, Mr. McPherson can't, and has not fully and ably represented this township in all respects.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. Are, are you done, Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Zagwar, can we have a, uh, motion?
Is there a motion to adopt resolution two nineteen dash twenty first?
Second.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matut Brown?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Uh, yes, and I wanted to thank Cindy for the comment that she just made about having independent council. And for Mr. Trank to explain that. I knew as the planning board liaison that Mr. McPherson. Who would be qualified to hear this was involved with the recent, uh, litigation. So I agree that it should be an independent council. My vote is yes.
Council President Casalino?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Great, okay, uh, item O. Um, two twenty-five dash twenty. We had some discussion in regards to the dollar amount with Mr. Gross. To try to spit for the special, uh, approval of special emergency, emergency fund. And the amount of seven, uh, point eight seven six two seventy-seven point ten. So, any other discussion from my colleagues who haven't had a chance to weigh in yet? Councilman, uh, Garino?
Yeah, I just, I just have one question, uh, Council President. It's a thing, and then like I said, I understand about the requirements and why you're doing this. But what's gonna be the bellwether? What's gonna be the trigger that's gonna decide how much you're gonna take? And what will be the payback? You know, what will be the time length for the payback? So if you can give me that kind of idea, Mr. Gross, doesn't mean, you know, just, I just need to know what's gonna be the triggering? To pull this money?
The, the triggering is gonna be by category, any shortages that we have in revenue. So if we have, I'll, I'll, I'll use an example. If, if parking meters, uh, we're, we're short eight thousand dollars in parking meters. Um, then, then we're gonna borrow eight thousand dollars. Uh, if we're short two hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, in sewer user charges. Then we're gonna borrow two hundred and forty thousand dollars, not a penny more than whatever we're short. And whatever we're, and, and that goes to a meeting our, our revenue projections under which the, the budget is struck. So it, it is, if, if we borrow more, if we should accidentally borrow more money, we have to return it. We can't use it for anything else. There's no risk that it'll be used for any other purpose other than the balance of revenues.
Okay, so basically, I guess one last question, what are, can you tell me what the revenue shortfalls are as of this, of today?
Right now, my estimate, if we, if we don't take in anything more, um, it's this, the number that you have now, the, the, the seven million eight.
Okay, seven million eight is our current revenue projected shortfalls?
Yes.
Okay. And you do, my one last question, uh, thank you, Council President, with my one last, do you foresee it getting any worse?
Hopefully not.
I don't think so. I mean, I, I, I think I've stated, I don't think it's gonna be this bad based on what we know. But again, you know, we don't know, look, a year ago today, you know, we weren't looking at two hundred deaths in town. We weren't looking at, at the, the, the thousands of people that were sick and ill that's leading us to this point it is. So as I sit here today, and I can tell you, I don't think it's going, I think we're not gonna use this much here. But I don't know what the future holds, and if we've learned nothing else. Over, over the past six, seven months, is that we don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah.
So, I, for the most, this is gonna be paper. You know, this isn't gonna get borrowed. We get down to December and we only need. Seven hundred thousand or a million and a half, whatever the number is, that's all we're gonna borrow.
Okay. Okay, thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Gross, and thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Councilman Kukoviac, I know you asked all your questions on this. You have anything else?
Uh, no, no, I'm just, uh, I'm just uncomfortable, uh, with the way that this is, uh, th- this is a huge number. And I, I feel very strongly that if this is our potential, that, that the council, uh, should. Use its, uh, budget powers to try to reduce our spending elsewhere. Instead of, of, uh, borrowing or potentially borrowing up this, you know, this. It doesn't sound like we, I, I just don't feel comfortable.
Councilman, do you have recommendations of where to cut eight million dollars?
Well, Mr. Gross, you were at all the meetings and you heard all of my suggestions and every one of those votes.
Eight, eight million dollars.
Well, you're the one that's saying it may not be eight million dollars. But here's my point, and you and I disagree and have disagreed on this practically since the day you, you came to town. But I'm very concerned about all of the borrowing we're doing. And, uh, this is just piling, potentially piling, uh, even more. And, uh, we didn't cut anything from the budget. We cut a little bit about what, of what we were proposed to spend, but we didn't cut anything out of the budget. And I, I, I hope it doesn't come back to haunt us.
I thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Matut Brown, any comments?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I, I do wanna say that I, I think that it, it is fair to say that our, my council colleagues. We all contributed to looking for ways to cut the budget when we had our meetings. And, and we do continuously speak about how much we can cut, where we can cut. However, understanding where we are right now, and you can laugh, Councilman Kukoviac, that's fine. Um, where we are right now with our shortfalls, you know, and what we're looking at. You know, with whatever's happening with the pandemic, uh, there is an uptick right now. Who knows how many more people are not going to be able to continue to pay their mortgage or their taxes or. It, it, it's a very uncertain space that we're in. I don't want to borrow any more money, but also I don't want us to be in a position where next, uh, budget season comes around. And then we're looking to recoup what we've lost in revenue from our, from our residents. That's not prudent to me either. Um, I trust that, you know, the application is due December first. And this is actually asking for, uh, an extension of that deadline. And, and, and in advance of that, I, 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 I trust that Mr. Gross will also share what those, um, line items are where we are. Because he will have that information closer to this time. But I, I don't think it's fair to paint a picture that the council does not care to buy, to, to, to borrow. Is not concerned or as concerned as Councilman Kukoviac is, or any one of my other council colleagues are. However, these times are very uncertain and, and we have to be able to run our, our, our township. And, uh, hoping that we don't have to borrow this much. But there's also, I, I, it's not a saving grace, however, the interest rates are incredibly low at this time. And it, it is something that I think that is, is prudent to do however much I don't want to. Um, but I just wanted to make very clear that it's, it's not that the council is not concerned.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, uh. Councilman, I'm gonna let Council, uh, Woman McCartney speak. You spoke numerous times about this already. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so I'm just thinking back at our budget hearings, um, which was months ago. And we were talking about COVID and its impact, and now it is how many months later? And, um, John, and you're in, when you were anticipating revenue, uh, it wasn't nearly as devastating as it is now. The hotel tax, sewer tax, things that people are not able to, irregular tax collection are not able to, um, produce at this time. So I, I guess my question really was, so I do understand this. Um, because as Councilwoman Matu Brown said, we don't want to come back next year and look at, uh. A tax increase, uh, for this. I wanted to ask you about the COVID cares grant. How does that play into this? And was that just for purchasing, uh, items related to COVID?
Mr. Mr. Gross, if you could answer that for Councilwoman and also, uh. It, share the conversation we had about, uh, how the CARES Act, what, how is, it's limited with paying for staff?
Um, that's.
Thank you.
The answer is the CARES Act will not cover any revenue shortfalls.
Oh.
It, 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 it is.
It was more a purchasing agent, right?
It's a perfect staffing, uh, specific staffing to, uh, COVID responsibilities. And, uh, any, you know, PPE, any, anything that we've purchased to fight COVID. Uh, but, but it, you, not one penny can go towards revenue relief. Now, we could get real, you know, if, if the, if the, the, the federal government between now and January first comes up with a plan. That they're talking about to give, uh, relief to, to states and counties and municipalities for revenue losses. Then this will become not even necessary. This is a tool in our toolbox. To, and, 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 and frankly, the last tool we want to use in the toolbox. But right now, it's the only tool we have for revenue shortages. So it, it's, it's, you know, we're trying, trying to build an answer to an uncertain circumstance. And, and this is what we have. This is what we have to work with.
Thank you. I understand.
All right, it's cool.
Okay, so. I'm sorry, Mr. Sarris, did you wanna say something?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I just said, I think it's ready, we're ready to call for the vote.
Oh, I didn't speak yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, you know, so. You know, we had a long budget season. I don't wanna rehash, you know, uh, blow by blow of the budget. But we spent an exorbitant amount of time on line item after line on it, line item. And, you know, what it comes down to is we're gonna have to cut, to make real cuts. We have to cut staffing and major programming. We have a lot of contractual obligations. This year, we have a lot of state mandates this year. And when you get down to it, it's, it's gonna be major layoffs. And, um, and, and that's it. So I, I, I appreciate, we have a tool in our toolbox. I'm gonna trust our CFO, uh, not to, you know, hopefully not to spend that money. That hopefully, um, when we get the, after the sixteen, once the sixteenth is the last day, uh. You know, hopefully men, many people pay the fourth quarter taxes and, uh, that amount will, will drop significantly. Um, but right now, we have to, to go with that on, on, uh, for tonight's purposes. So, um, if we go lower, we can't go higher. And I, I think we have to, um, be diligent, otherwise we're looking at, at layoffs. So, um, with that, um. If we can now call for the vote.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution two, two, five dash twenty first?
Don't move.
Second.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Uh, I just wanna say before I vote that, that I really dislike the fact that the council president knows I wanted to say something. She's very familiar with the ordinance that says that I should be allowed to speak.
Go ahead, Councilman, go ahead. You've been speaking about this for a while. Go ahead.
That's correct, and there's nothing in the ordinance that says because you don't want to tell me to talk, that you can do that. You don't have that power.
Model one, go ahead.
Thank you. What I wanted to say was that Councilwoman Matu Brown was absolutely right. I apologize to her. I should not have laughed, and I apologize to everybody else on the call. I should not have laughed.
Okay.
And, uh, I vote no on this.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Matut Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Council President Casalino?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Okay, so, um. Miss, let's see, Mr. Trank, do you wanna go into executive session now, or should we go through the ordinances?
No, no, I, please, I'd love to go now. Um, um, my, so the short answer is I, I emailed around to, uh, each of you.
Uh, Councilman.
The, uh. The dial-in, and if it's okay with the moderator, then hopefully we can all mute our screens. And the moderator will play Beatles music.
I have to get it, I have to get it set up. But yes, um, if you mute your screens and your, um. Your mi- uh, microphone in your screen, and then when you're ready to come back, when you appear back on screen, then, um, we'll be back. And I'll have a screen that says that you're in executive session.
But I do think that the clerk would call a roll call vote on two sixteen dash twenty, uh, in public. With, uh, Councilman Kukoviac, uh, recusing himself on that.
Yeah. Okay, so. Okay, so that one.
Just on two sixteen dash.
Yeah, just the one.
So should I read the resolution?
It's, it's two sixteen dash twenty, delete the words and personnel matter at the end of the entry.
Yeah, I have done that. All right. So resolution authorizing an executive session to discuss a matter of litigation is specifically. Resolution two seventeen dash twenty, authorizing the settlement of litigation with Councilman Kukoviac. Um, Councilman Kukoviac is recusing himself from the discussion. Should I, uh, motion?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution two sixteen dash twenty first?
Don't move.
Who was first? Cindy?
Yes.
Council, uh, right.
Yeah, Councilwoman Matu Brown.
Okay, and Council President Michelle Casalino. So Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Council, uh, Councilwoman Matut Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
And Council President Casalino?
Yes.
Uh, the motion is carried.
Okay. Councilman Kukoviac, you have a quick question?
Very quick question. I, I just have a strong feeling that, uh, some of the people that spoke during, uh, public. Here because they wanna hear what else is gonna be said about, uh, trees and Crestmont. And I just wanted to suggest that perhaps we, uh, we go pending before we, uh, break for, uh, your executive session.
Well, well, we gotta get council, uh, count, I'm councilman, uh, Mr. Trank off the call. So.
Let me just interject here that if anyone is still on the call waiting for the tree ordinance, I did not expect to discuss that again. Because the forester, hopefully will have his presentation, I mean, I know his presentation is ready. Has to go through legal first, and that should be ready for our next meeting where he can do his presentation and all of the questions. And everyone can be invited back to have that discussion.
You don't wanna hold on to the call, you could come back, but we have to take care of our, our council business this evening. So, um, and that's a pending matter, so, um, we have to prioritize, uh, the council's business tonight. So thank you, Councilman, for thinking that, but just, just so the public knows, we have to take a short break to go into executive session. And we will be back. Everybody ready? Everybody's here?
I'm ready.
Okay, I go right ahead.
So again, uh, Madam Clerk, I think you're gonna read the resolution and then roll the vote.
All right. Um, resolution, uh, two seventeen dash twenty. Resolution 217-20, resolution authorizing settlement of litigation with Councilman Krokoviac. Is there a motion to adopt resolution 217-20 first?
Some of.
Second.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Councilman Guarino?
Wait, can, can we make a comment before we vote?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. I mean, I understand, you know, through, through, you know, conversations with legal counsel and my counsel colleagues to accept this settlement offer, you know, to Councilman Krokoviac, which I personally think is a total waste of municipal and residents' money on something that, that is there. But he wanted another version. And that's what just totally confuses me after years. Even before I was or anyone else on the council, the budget presentation was always an audio council. So I don't understand where having a video made it any difference or gave any other information. And maybe we were picking our nose or yawning or anything else. So, I mean, I'm just really, really upset that we were paying money to a council colleague for something that was there and didn't make any difference. But, you know, I, you know, and we have to, you know, I'm voting yes because if it goes any further, it could possibly cost the township more money. So that's, I wanted to say that it's something that had to be said. So of course, I'm going to vote yes to this settle this and not cost the township any more money. So I vote yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
So on principle, I want to vote no on this for the same reasons. This was, we were all polled at the beginning of our budget hearing that we were not requesting it to be recorded. And Councilman Krokoviac went ahead and requested a video. The fact that the video was made, he's eligible to have it at a cost of $400. Now that it's gone to litigation, there is a settlement here for $2,500 to pay these legal fees, which I believe are unnecessary. If Councilman Krokoviac wanted the video and he knew it was available, he could have paid the $400 himself instead of having the municipality now foot this bill for a legal expenditure. I'm voting no.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So just, just, I guess I'm going to take a step back of my thoughts. Maybe I should Mr. Trank for the purpose of educating the public because we all assume sometimes things are on Facebook and everyone knows about them. So on June 20th, we had a budget workshop. Budget workshop that we have every year that is recorded, made available to the public. And why say recorded, it's audio. And, you know, we, it's, you know, the past couple of years, they've gotten longer and longer because I give my colleagues credit. We ask a lot of questions. And last year's budget workshop in 2019 went for 12 hours. You know, we sat there in council chambers from 9:00 AM to almost 9:00 PM. And the years before that, they're about six, seven hours long. And in 2020, we spent nine hours on a beautiful June afternoon, from morning to late afternoon, nine hours going over the budget. Now, part of the video, not having a video is because the school board has a time slot for us that is four hours long. So whenever our late night meetings go long, you may see them get cut off. And so if there's not time in there, that's scheduled when the school board's in session and usually very busy, especially in June, where they're showing all their graduations and their concerts for the kids. You know, we get cut off. So, you know, our budget Zoom video that didn't show any figures, we had two, two slides. One was agenda that had for a couple of items on it that showed what times that the directors were going to speak. And we were definitely off times because we always go, went longer than anticipated. And, and a slide about, you know, a couple of figures that we posted to our website, our budget booklet was posted to the website. The, the audience could not see our figures. All you saw was us looking down like I'm looking now at our budget books, asking questions. But still, we had it on audio. In order for the moderator to go back and make a video of that, especially during a week when the school board had all their graduations and it was a busy week, was going to have to shut down the systems for, for about 24 hours to make this video. So very frustrating that we all had a conversation that was not on tape, that we all had a discussion on Zoom. Before you come on Zoom, we could all talk to each other. And a conversation was had that, you know, that we were going to, it was going to be audio. None of my colleagues requested anything different. Myself as the president did not make this executive decision on my own. My council colleagues didn't dispute that we were going to audio. No one asked or requested it at that point in time. When the meeting was over, after nine long hours of being on the call and asked again, you know, or the moderator informing us that we would have the materials later in the week because of the schedule that our moderator had that week, that she was very busy. I believe, one of my colleagues asked about the slides. And so another conversation was had about this being an audiotape. And everyone else heard it. And then, you know, all of a sudden, a request for video was made after the fact. And a cost was associated with that, which was no problem. But then my, our council colleague decided that he would open request us for that information. And again, there's, you know, it was going to take time and a cost to make that tape. We still provided it. So the need for an attorney and to go this route is very, very disheartening, especially when we all work so hard to be transparent. And as much as we all disagree sometimes with each other, I think we all try to accommodate each other's needs. And so I do want to vote no on this. But unfortunately, when you get lawyers and attorneys involved, it only costs the township more money. And, and so therefore, I'm going to have to vote yes. So it's a very disappointing, yes, yes, thank you, Madam Clerk.
The motion is carried.
Thank you.
What's next, ordinances, second and final reading?
Okay. Our colleague join us, please.
Madam President?
Yes.
I can turn on the video for.
Yes, yes, yeah, he's, he's done recusing himself for the evening.
There we go.
We all set?
Yes, I have Mr. Gross also off. And I don't know if that's, no, he turned himself on before, so he must have turned himself off.
Yeah. Is Mr. Lepore still on the call in case anybody needs him? I think we're okay, but just in case, it's only first reading.
I do not see him on the call right now.
Okay, it's, it's on first reading, we should be. Okay, we all, we all good, Madam?
Okay.
Moderator?
Yes, you're going to, I'm sorry, you're going to number nine or number 10?
I'm going to number nine ordinance on second and final reading. Oh, actually, his is second and final reading, that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to go ahead and read the ordinance?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Ordinance 2620-20, in ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seven, traffic subsection 7-32.2, restricted parking zones of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange, 256 South Valley Road. Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 2620-20 on second and final reading?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
And Council President Michelle Casalino?
Yes. Okay, at this point in time, this ordinance on second and final reading. We got the clock up. If there's any members of the audience that wish to comment on this ordinance only, on ordinance 2620-20, please raise your hand for our moderator.
Raise your hand button at the bottom of the screen? Any of our attendees?
And nobody's raising their hand.
Okay. At this point in time, do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments on this ordinance? Councilman Guarino?
No, so parking is, you know.
Yeah. Councilman Krokoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
None.
Councilwoman McCartney?
No questions.
Okay. With that, you could take it for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2620-20 on second and final reading first?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Council President Michelle Casalino?
Yes. Okay, now we'll move on to ordinance on first reading.
Ordinance 2621-20, ordinance authorizing special emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA 48:4-53 for severance liabilities resulting from unanticipated required accumulated absence payouts in connection with the laid off or retirement of employees. Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 2621-20 on first reading?
Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Obstein.
Okay, Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, an introduction, do you have a question?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Councilwoman. Oh, and myself, yes. Okay. Council President.
The question is, the resolution 21620 was pulled. And now we're, we have an ordinance. What, what was that purpose?
It's a, it's a sequencing issue. In order for the resolution to have any effect, the ordinance has to have been in effect. So you can't have, you can't have a resolution about an ordinance that doesn't yet exist. So it's just sequencing.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I had asked Mr. Gross earlier, this is what, about 30 employees?
Yeah, actually, I went back and did the count. It was fewer than I thought, it's about 21.
20, oh, 21, wow. Okay. Okay, does anyone else have any questions at this time for the administration on this? Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, we can move on to 2622-20.
Refunding bond ordinance providing for the refunding of all or a portion of the outstanding general obligation bond, series 2011 of the Township of West Orange in the County of Exex, New Jersey, appropriating $4,500,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $4,500,000 refunding bonds of the township for financing the cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 2622-20 on first reading first?
Some of.
Second.
Second. Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Obstein.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
And Council President Michelle Casalino?
Yes. Okay, so Mr. Gross, you're taking advantage of some refinancing, some low rates?
You know, this is like refinancing your house, only bigger numbers. Or for most people, bigger numbers. This, it's anticipated based on current rates that this refunding will save over the next six years about $232,000.
Okay, nice job. Okay, and 2623-20?
Ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation in the amount of $7,876,277.10 or such other amount certified by the Director of the Division of Local Government Services for the purposes set forth in NJSA 48:4-53L and/or NJSA 48:4-53M in and by the Township of West Orange in the County of Exex, New Jersey. Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 2623-20 on first reading first?
Some of.
Okay.
Second. Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Obstein.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Council President Michelle Casalino?
Yes. Okay. Let's see here. Okay, so we're going to pending matters. First, I'd like to start off with, you know, Mr. Lepore is no longer on the call. Mr. Gross, did you get any details from him earlier in regards to where we're at in the process?
Yeah.
With the bathrooms and the fire stations?
Actually, I just wanted to confirm when we talked today. I didn't want to tell you something that I wasn't on. But the architect has been hired and they're working on it now. And the next step is to go back and, and talk with the fire department about the plans and get, nail it down so we can get it out to bid.
Okay, beautiful. Can we update or at least work with our Mr. Saris and Mr. Gross, the fire chief? And, you know, I just want them to, to, to know, you know, when they can expect a bathroom in those firehouses?
Well, that's what I, what I just said was we're going back to them, the fire chief and.
I mean, the firefighters, yeah.
They're on the committee, the chief selected, the chief is. He's dealing with. And to talk to them to get it out to bid. You know, look, it's a construction project.
I know, I know.
It can take, you know, if, if, if we go, and we've had this happen before, and it's frustrating, we went out to bid and we didn't get any bidders. So you had to reduce the scope and go out and redo it, and it takes time. If everything goes perfectly, if it goes out now, I would say late spring should be able, you know, should be able to be into the project, if not completing it certainly before summer. But that's if everything goes perfect.
Okay, but the issue there is, I know the plumbing has to be all ripped out because it's underneath, and that's where a lot of the problems are. If we could just see what we could do temporarily, because I know, you know, it's COVID. And, you know, the concern is with the showers not working. So just if we could just make sure there's some kind of temporary fix.
If, 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 if the administration, and we will look at this, believes that there's some situation that exists with, with the current that's not, not safe, we'll rent, you know, we'll rent the equipment and bring it, you know, outdoor showers. And we'll do what's necessary. I've not been informed that that's the case.
Okay.
It is, I will certainly do that. We do not expect any of our personnel to work in conditions that aren't safe for them. And if the case, then we will, we'll, we'll rent whatever equipment we need, you know, to bring in the outside, you know, I wish you can do outside toilets, you can do outside showers with, you know, with privacy. The, the equipment exists.
Okay, so if that discussion could be had in your meetings, I just. Okay, so if, if that discussion could be had in your meetings, I, I just want to make sure, because these are things we've heard from some of the firefighters themselves. So I just want to make sure if there is, is a need there, or, you know, it hasn't been fixed temporarily, if we could look at a solution.
The very first thing we need to, what we will do is, since the, since the issue's lit up, is make a determination whether there's a safety issue. And if there's a safety issue, we're not going to talk to them about it, we're going to do it.
Okay, great, thank, thank you. If you could report back, that would be wonderful. Okay, so with that, that was one item. The next item is, so the process, Mr. Gross, for open space committee voted for, to wanting appraisals for Rock Spring, I'm not, oh geez, Rock Spring, it's getting late, Crestmont. What is the process, and how do we get a resolution? What do we need to do to get a resolution? If that's what my colleagues, I want to hear from my colleagues if they're supportive of moving forward at this point in time with an appraisal. So I'll start with, first you talk, Mr. Gross, and I'll go to my colleagues and poll them.
I, I haven't had, I haven't had conversations with the mayor regarding this. This is just coming up for the first time tonight.
Okay.
So that'll be the first step the administration does, is huddle and talk about it, and see what direction, the recommendations we'd like to make. It, it is a complicated matter because of the, our intentions with Rock Spring, and to use Green Acres money there. And, and one of the concerns that we want to make sure that we're, we're not taking action
Yeah.
prematurely commits us to dedication of Rock Spring. And, and it's not even about the money so much, it's about whether, you know, our, our intention is to slice off a piece of that property for private use to help with replacing some of the tax rate. So that's, this is all going to be timed perfectly, because if, 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 if there's a requirement, I don't know that there is, but if there's a requirement with the group, with our own open space acquisitions to update the recreation open space inventory, that would be problematic if that occurred before we took action on Rock Spring. So, bottom line is, there's lots of us to think, lots of things for us to think about, investigate, and get back to council with the answers to, with, or at least the administration's recommendation of how to proceed.
Councilman McCartney, I saw your hand up.
No, thank you. I was under the impression that I do understand we have to come up with a plan for the Rock Spring golf club. I thought that was all going to be in Green Acres funds, and that we were not using open space funds.
Yeah.
So for getting the two appraisals.
We're having nothing to do, having nothing to do with Rock Spring, just in general, all the Green Acres properties have. We've agreed that anything that gets attached goes into our Rossi, which is the recreation.
Inventory, right.
Right. Triggers other provisions that say that anything we're using for recreational purposes gets dedicated as well, not just the new property. So what, one of the questions that we need to find out, and make sure that taking an action with the township's open space funds doesn't trigger an action requiring an update of the Rossi, which then requires a dedication of all recreational land, which would, would include Rock Spring in its entirety. So it's just, it's a timing question. Like I said, it's a complicated matter that, that we're just not ready yet to give, the administration is not prepared to give a recommendation yet, but I would suspect that that's not long, long from coming.
Well, I would assume too, a conversation needs to be had with the, the county, because I, I know the mayor had that meeting with the county executive, and therefore, would it be? I know, but this is Crestmont, this is, I'm sorry, go back to Crestmont.
Mayor is committed on keeping Crestmont as open space.
Yeah.
How we're going to do that, we're not, we haven't figured that out yet. But he has committed to keeping it as open space, rather than have it developed.
That's what, that's what I was, my understanding.
My comment is about the how, we don't know how, we're going to do it yet. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
That's guidance that will come shortly, I think.
So I'm going to poll my colleagues if everyone's supportive of you figuring the how to get this appraisal done, if that is the appropriate next step. So Councilman Garino, are you good with that?
Yep.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes, and I think we need to do it at all due deliberate speed, because my understanding is that said is what Mr., what, what Mayor Parisi said at the meeting at Crestmont, that we were moving forward, and I just think we should do it with all, all, as, as fast as we can. And we need the appraisals, you know, to trigger availability of funds, regardless of whether we go after Green Acres or not.
Okay.
The county's got, got a heck of a lot more resources than we do, and they seem to be just as interested in preserving it. So we just need to keep forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
I do have a lot of questions and, and, you know, but at this time, I would be supportive of an appraisal.
Okay. And Councilwoman McCartney?
So we need two appraisals. So, you know, there is a cost involved, but I, I am definitely interested in moving forward with this, and then figuring out how to fund the preservation of it thereafter. So yes.
All right, so Mr. Gross and Mr. Sares, you are charged with how we move forward next. And the appraisals, you know, do they come from our budget? Does it come from the open space fund? You get to figure all those, all those details out for us, and report back next meeting?
Sure.
Great, thank you, gentlemen. And I don't want to get a long, lengthy conversation about the tree ordinance. I just wanted to make one quick recommendation, because hearing all the recommendations, I know Mr. Linson's going to come give us a report. And I know how it, I, I know how important it is to get the tree companies registered. So, you know, because we keep having these issues.
Council President, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, let me just finish my point, Councilwoman, please. So my, my, I guess where I was thinking to make life easier, and just to have something in play as we move forward, if we would do it, an amendment only on adding, because I think we could all agree that we need to get, from what I'm hearing, I could be wrong. So again, I want to do a poll vote, but I'm hearing that everyone is in agreement with having these tree companies registered, and, and get that done as soon as possible. But the other items in the amendment, you know, are, are, everyone's not in agreement with. So I was going to make a recommendation, if we do a separate amendment for that, and, and, and get that rolling, so we could get that piece of it done, and work on everything else, as opposed to not moving forward and not having that piece into play, and we keep having these issues with these tree companies that are going wild, so.
So Council President?
Go ahead.
Thanks. I, the fact that you tabled it last council meeting was because we didn't have the plan, and we didn't have the documents that we needed, the accompanying documents. I had sent you one, you had questions on it. So I'm thinking the timing of all of this, if we do have this presentation, questions can be answered directly by the forester. He will have the documents for us that we need to register the, he'll have facts for us. He will have the forms that have been prepared to register the tree care experts, and also the permit application. So everything will be in a package that when we do adopt it, the registration form will begin in January. So it seems the timing of it, even if we move forward now to have people register, the tree care experts registered now, I don't, they're not going to pay for one month and then re-register.
Yeah.
So I think the timing of it, that we bring cumulative effect, do everything, will be in effect by January, and then we move forward with it.
Anyone else have any comments?
I do appreciate your sentiment about moving forward with the tree care experts. But I think, you know, starting January 1st fresh, having everyone registered, there are 100, there are 100 tree care experts out there. Oh, well, more, but 100 that will be receiving these letters, saying that this is our new ordinance.
But if we're not in a, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, if we're not in a, say, Mr. Linson speaks next week, and everyone's still not in agreement, I'm not looking to be like Debbie Downer here or anything, but I, I just want to recommend or keep in the back of your mind, I, if we, I just want to see, is everybody in agreement that we need to do that piece of it?
Council President, can I?
Yeah, go ahead, mister.
Okay, look, I mean, my rec, from my recollection of the discussion, the last couple of meetings, including this evening, I didn't think there was a serious disagreement with what was in the, the offered tree ordinance, except for the, I mean, there are a lot of people who want it to be more strict, and that's fine. And there, there are a lot of people who don't like the 15-foot height element, which certainly can be changed. But it seems to me that there was no disagreement about what was in the, in the new ordinance in terms of, you know, the, the, the only thing that I could rethink of that was rejected was that 15-foot item.
Right. And just going over my notes, Ken, thank you for that. Oh, really, it was about, one of the students had asked about that a permit needs to be required, and that is in the ordinance for every tree. So even if the homeowner.
Well, well, it's in the ordinance for every tree that's within two feet of, of a property line. It's not, it's not, it's not, it doesn't, that doesn't impact a tree that's in the middle of your yard, that's not within two feet of a property line. Those would, those are still, don't need a, don't need a permit. And, and so people were talking tonight about requiring a permit for every single tree removal, and that's fine if the council wants to do it, but that's not, that's not what the existing ordinance provides for.
Well, that's not how I'm reading this. Permit required. This is A in 25-27.4. Any person desiring to cut down or remove a tree shall file an application for a tree removal permit issued pursuant to this chapter, and shall not commence cutting down or removal of any tree without first having been issued a permit.
Yes, but there's an exception to that in another section, and the exception is, you can take down three trees within a 365-day period, so.
We still need to account for those three trees.
No.
That's what, that's what Mr. Linson is going to provide, how we're going to keep a record.
You have to get, you have to get a tree, a tree removal report has to be issued before the tree, those trees are removed. I, I forget how many days before, but.
Five days prior.
Right, so, and you could question whether that's enough and so forth. I don't, I mean, there's a lot of changes that can be made to this ordinance, no question. All I'm trying to do is avoid a situation where we completely reject or have to start all over again, knowing that we're going to have, well, you just, you guys have to figure that out.
On my notes. I agree with you, Ken, there were not that many amendments that would need to be made. People don't agree with the three trees per year. That, you know, like I said before, there's a compromise between the homeowners and the protection of trees.
And by the way, all of this stuff can be discussed, not only in pending matters, but they can be discussed in a conference meeting, or, or a work session, as Councilman Krokoviac and I think others had suggested. I mean, you can do that, it's hard to get all of you folks together on another night, but, but, but it can be discussed at a, at a conference meeting, it can be discussed at a special meeting, and that's fine, but I, I just, I don't understand the need to try to have a perfect ordinance before you pass anything, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Council President?
Go, go ahead, councilwoman.
To, to your point with, with, with respect to enforcement and not having a plan, and I hear that there was an application and there's going to be a presentation. You know, I, I would still have the same concern if there isn't a plan for that type of support in registering all of the tree experts, who, you know, what, what is that plan?
Yeah.
That's a part of the presentation.
So if we're going to do that, thank you, Council, Councilwoman McCartney. So if, if that's going to be addressed in the plan, then I, I suggest that we table this conversation. It is now 11:28.
Yes.
And.
I had suggested that a long time ago, since we're having a presentation.
And we have the conversation, have our questions. I, I think it would be prudent if you have the plan in advance to send it around to council so that we can look at it and have questions, and not spend so much time belaboring the points, and address it at that time. I know that there are other issues with respect to the three trees that, you know, as opposed to, you know, none or one tree requiring a permit, or the tree stump after you've taken it down, that was another issue, of having to have someone come out and inspect a tree stump after you've removed a dead tree. I, I think that if there is a plan, if you can share it with us in advance, that'd be great, and we should, you know, continue this conversation after the presentation.
And, and that's a great recommendation, and I just want to add to administration, you know, everything that is going to be a responsibility of our staff, again, I hope that's in the presentation next week, because I know we are limited. I know property maintenance goes out to look at trees. I know they are understaffed right now. So again, I, I, when we have this presentation next week, you know, it's very important that we really have a full understanding, you, you know, of how it, how, you know, operations is going to be able to handle, because I know Verona has a tree ordinance that every, every tree, there's a permit, and you want to take a tree down, you got to wait over a month for somebody to come look at your tree. So we have to, you know, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of balancing that we have to do when we listen to this presentation next week, as far as making sure, you know, we want to look at the environment, but we also want to make sure, you know, we're not stressing residents out as well. So with that, thank you to my colleagues for entertaining the conversation. And it is late, and we have one more ABC hearing. Does anyone have any last minute questions for the administration right now? Are we ready to move on? Okay, great. With that, I'm going to need a motion to go to, to go to ABC hearing.
Do you want to adjourn?
Nation, motion to adjourn as counsel.
Yes.
I make a motion. Second. Susan and Cindy. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Okay, beautiful. Okay, so our next meeting is, what, Tuesday? I can't read it because my screen's in the way.
24th.
November 24th.
Yeah.
Okay, instructions will be on the township website the Friday before. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Don't move, Council President.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, everyone this evening. Thank you, West Orange, for tuning in. If you've been here the whole meeting, thank you. I know we went a little late tonight. And just remember to wear, wear your mask, stay social distance, and stay safe. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, West Orange.
Hey, thank you, this is to inform everyone that when I end the meeting, it will end for those, both on screen and off screen, and no other business will be conducted. Thank you all, and have a great night.
Thank you.